Good evening. I'd like to call the board meeting, February 12th, Oshkosh Area School Board to session. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Roll call, please.
Snowing.
Here.
Right.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Dewitt.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you, and we have two members here tonight from Perry Tipler that will help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Praze Unora and Yui Watanabe. If you'd like to just come over there and lead us, that would be great. You should just stay there for just a second. Ladies, I got your certificates. Thank you for coming this evening. Mary Lee, thank you very much. We appreciate all of your efforts and sharing your talents with us this evening. Thank you very much. And now we have Principal Tyler Humenton from Perry Tipler to give us some highlights of the students at Perry Tipler this school year.
For sure. Well, first things first, I want to thank Yui and Praze for coming out here at night and getting through the snowstorm, as well as a tough day at school. You know, Praze was like, "I can just walk home." And I'm like, "Ah, make sure your mom comes with you too," just because of the weather and stuff, right? So, there's a lot of really cool things going on at Perry Tipler right now. And to kind of keep my points quick, I want to touch on, based on our KPIs, right? So, in terms of literacy, this past, or this school year, we put a really big emphasis on increasing our students' proficiency in academic vocabulary. And from our fall I read it to our mid-year, we've went from 41% of our students who are proficient to 48%. So, overall, it's a 7% increase in our students who are proficient in academic vocabulary. And in terms of overall literacy, we've improved from 44% proficient to 52% proficient. So, our school-wide goal is set at 60%, and we're feeling we're on a really good track to hit that mark this year, so we're excited. In terms of socio-emotional learning, we just wrapped up girls' basketball. A really big emphasis for our district is getting students out for sports. So, we had a pretty good success with our girls coming out there. And for wrestling, we have 30 kids out for wrestling right now.
Wow.
So, they're out tumbling around after school. It's fun to kind of watch in there and see those kids get after it, too. And a lot of first-time wrestlers, too, which is really fun to see. Back in January, we had our therapy dog, Rev, start with us, and he's a big hit amongst the students. So, his handlers are Mr. Brian Casey and Ms. Nicole Beckman. He's out in the belt between passing times with his handlers. Kids will pop into offices to see him and just kind of hang out with Rev to get their cuddles and pets in and be able to carry on their day. Another huge addition to our school this past year was our Student Resource Officer, Tanner Rasmussen. He is phenomenal at making relations with our kids, and within the first week of him being with us, he made a point to sit at every single lunch table for both of our lunches, and technically, it's all four lunches that we have, to get to know kids and establish positive rapport. He was out for a little bit with the paternity leave, but as soon as he was back, kids were right back with him, trying to have a good time. In terms of staff engagement, our mid-year review feedback has been positive. I've met with teachers who are on evaluation right now to see what are some things that are going well, some things that we continue to improve on, and I've seen pretty positive feedback of how things are going. And I plan on meeting with my support year staff in the next coming weeks here, too, to get some more feedback on that. Overall, our staff are indicating a very collaborative and welcoming environment. And one thing that I think we're doing that's pretty special is staff ownership of professional development, which allows our teachers' voice and choice in our PD opportunities, again, tied to our KPIs, to have learning experiences that help them out and things that they can apply to their classrooms and their fields as well.
Awesome.
So, I'm really happy to be at Tipler. It's a great school. It's going wonderful right now. And, you know, we got a school dance coming up next week, Fri- or next week, Thursday, for kids. And then in March, we're going to be planning a family night for families to come in, too.
That's great.
Awesome.
Any questions for Tyler?
Do you guys still do the ROAR, the Tipler, like, line or something?
We still, we still have ROAR as our PBIS acronym.
Okay.
Responsible, Organizing, Always Respectful.
But nothing on the intercom where somebody roars. My sons used to think that Jay Jones was roaring because they'd do the homeroom announcement or something.
I mean, I could start roaring and have Mr. Vlog start roaring. It'd be totally fine.
Just curious.
Mr. Casey will roar like a tiger in German. He likes speaking in German over the intercom sometimes, too, so.
Awesome.
Thanks, Tyler. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'ochunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you. Next aim is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes anyone would like to see to the agenda?
No.
Okay, we will keep it as is. And on to the retirement report. We have four retirees to announce today. The first one is Valerie Aronson, School Secretary at Oshkosh West since 2003; Mary Hendricks, grade three teacher at Oaklawn since 1995; Jody Pinkerton, IST Literacy Interventionist at Reed since 1995; and Michael Schuman, Building Custodian, Oshkosh North High School since 1993. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. I had the pleasure of working with the, the three of the four people during my tenure in the, in the central office. And once again, I want to wish these people a long, healthy, and happy retirement and thank them for everything they've done to advance student learning and growth. Mary Hendricks, I recall meeting when, in the old Oaklawn building in the hallway that there were only two hallways, so it wasn't too hard to figure out how to get around in there. She was in the hallway that led to the gym, which also served as the cafeteria and the art room. And always, always putting students first. Jody Pinkerton was the same way, up on the second floor at Reed Elementary School, transitioned from a classroom teacher to an IST interventionist. And I just ran into Mike Schuman earlier this week. And I just want to thank all these people. I didn't work directly with Valerie, but heard good things about her, and we just have wonderful people.
Absolutely.
Hate to see people go, but I understand they have to go to the next stage and phase of life. But always important to let them know that they're welcome to come back, and we're always looking for good substitutes. And so, we wish them well, but we also would like to extend an invitation to them to come back and visit. So, thank you to Valerie, Mary, Jody, and Michael for the, Mike for the many students who've influenced and your impact on our students and staff over the many years you've served.
Great. Any other comments? Thank you. We wish you well. And the president's report. First of all, I wanted to say that the board listening session scheduled for this evening was not canceled, but rather rescheduled for the next board meeting on February 26th. I wanted to have the opportunity to provide the community with information regarding the fake Facebook accounts before engaging in any community dialogue. We know there's a lot of topics in the community that people would like to address in our listening sessions, so we look forward to hearing from all of you on February 26th at 5:00. I am saddened to give tonight's president's report. This evening, I will address the issue of the fake Facebook profiles created by school board members, Dr. Tim Hess, Mike Melter, and Kelly Dewitt, Missy Green. I would like to thank the many citizens for reaching out and sharing their concerns. Our board members have heard from citizens via email, phone, social media, and face-to-face. They are angry. They are angry at Dr. Hess and Ms. Dewitt for operating under what they believe was a false narrative, and they are angry at this board for not taking a stand to rebut the board member behavior expected in policy 0144.5 and for a decision not to take definitive action to remove them. I'd like to take a few minutes to clarify some facts. The investigation by District Legal Counsel per board, policy 0144.5, found insufficient evidence of a policy violation as described in the complaint as filed. And the complaint was brought by a concerned citizen, and we appreciate the input. The investigation's scope was limited to the specific complaint, and after the complaint, the Facebook pages were deleted or deactivated, preventing further evidence collection. It is interesting to note that since the determination was made public, the, the community members have known these pages have been active for over two years, covering district, board member, and staff topics. Although our board policies set expectations for professional conduct, they are primarily focused on behavior during official meetings and activities. We do not, and should not, regulate personal social media use or professional behavior 24/7. We absolutely expect board members to treat each other, colleagues, and staff with respect and to behave ethically. Many of you want to know why we, the board, weren't taking stronger steps to discipline. For any situation that is not illegal, Wisconsin law prevents school boards from removing members internally. While the legislature has specifically provided that right to other municipal entities, that is not a right given to school boards in Wisconsin. Removal requires a resignation, a regular election cycle, a recall at taxpayer expense, or county circuit court action. Some are attempting to connect this behavior solely to the support or opposition to our April 2025 referendum based on partisan party lines. From my standpoint, nothing could be further from the truth. This is not about partisan politics or limiting speech. It is about upholding the sacred trust between elected officials and the citizens they serve. Differing opinions are not only the backbone of our society, they are essential to effective school board governance. This strength, however, depends on authentic engagement, and using fake book accounts to create dialogue is not transparency, it's a manufactured illusion. Elected leadership requires the courage to be direct and stand behind your words. It's about engaging openly and honestly and respecting our community's intelligence and ability to evaluate different viewpoints on their merits. Being a school board member is not for the faint of heart. It requires members to be an advocate for what serves our district and our students, even when those positions challenge our, our personal viewpoints or face oppositions. While the role is extremely time-consuming and grudge-wrenching at times, it also offers profound rewards, particularly witnessing and knowing you are part of student success in literacy, in math, the arts, sports, and most importantly, life skills. The actions and decisions made by Dr. Hess and Ms. Dewitt may not have been illegal, but they were deceitful. I am deeply disappointed that the behavior of the two school board members has damaged public trust, created community division, and diverted our district's critical work. Real community dialogue happens when we speak authentically, listen respectfully, and recognize that our differences may be a source of strength, not division. We are committed to moving this district forward and must do better to regain and keep the public's trust by acting in a way that promotes common sense, integrity, civility, and decorum. Thank you for allowing me to address this very important matter. While the situation has been challenging for our community, our primary focus must remain on our students and the district. So now, let's turn back to tonight's agenda and continue our essential work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll start with Jory to give us some highlights from West High School, so if we can get Jory's presentation up there with what's up with the Wildcats, so. I know it's been a, I know it's been a busy time over there, and good times with the snowblast week and such things, right, Jory?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
(inaudible).
It's fun when the technology guy has color.
Yeah, really. Isn't that nice?
I'm making you look bad.
No, you're making us look good that people can have issues with.
All right, so what's going on Wildcats? Some past events that we've had, we had Footloose, which is our musical this year. We had Snowblast Week, a bunch of athletics, Teachers in Sneakers, and Key Club activities. So, Footloose was, I believe, two weekends ago, three maybe? But it was a really cool show to get to see and to be a part of. I know everybody that I've talked to that went really enjoyed it, so it was really cool. So, congratulations to everybody that was a part of it, and if you went and supported, thank you for that. And we had some center stage judges there, which is a, like a musical competition, basically, that West has been a part of for the last few years, I know for sure. Snowblast Week was last week, so every Monday through Thursday, we had activities during the day, as well as dress-ups. The activities included tug-of-war, human, I can't think of the word. We had a team waistline, team height challenge. We had a lot of other activities, like snowballing. And then the dance was last Saturday, so that was a really fun experience to everybody that went.
And this year, you had snow. Last year, I remember, you didn't have snow, right?
Yes, we do, we did have a lot of snow.
Yes, so that's a, that's a bonus.
Mm-hmm. Boys Swim just took third at conference last Saturday as well, and they have sectionals this weekend, so hopefully, we can get some of those guys to advance onto state this year. That would be really awesome to see, because they, I remember them missing it by 3 hundredths of a second last year, which really sucks. Gymnastics had their only home meet on February 3rd, and we had top finishes from Neva, Lydia, and Janaya, who all took within the top three, and they, they won that meet. Girls and boys basketball, both have a game this Friday. They, girls had senior night yesterday. Wrestling took fourth place overall at conference, both boys and girls did, and they have regionals coming up as well, but we had first-place finishes from Eddie, Lauren, and Cotty. Teachers in Sneakers happened, I believe, on the 26th of January. And second year in a row, they beat the Appleton Area School District, so to call them a win there. Key Club, some recent events Key Club has done is a winter gear drive for the Boys and Girls Club, as well as blanket making, also for the Boys and Girls Club. Upcoming events, we have the Blood Drive, ACT, All-City Orchestra, Solo Ensemble, and Details Matter. So, we have our second Blood Drive, which is this Friday. Currently, we had about 20 spots still open, but we had already reached our goal of people signed up for it, which was really awesome. ACT is the 11th and the 12th of March for the juniors, and they have W hours, which, like a homeroom, basically, for practice and tips for taking the ACT coming up. I believe that's on the 8th of March. All-City Orchestra Concert is happening February 22nd at 4:30, and that takes place in the North Fieldhouse. District Solo and Ensemble, that is March 1st, and that's also at North High School, so that's a really cool event for all music students in the high school level to participate in. And then finally, we have Details Matter, which is a new car detailing service for West employees, and it helps give students hands-on experience in that world. Thank you. Yeah, I believe that's all I have.
Jory, I know you were involved with Footloose. It was outstanding. I'm not sure exactly what your role is, but all of you did a terrific job. It was as good of any play I've seen recently. It was terrific.
Well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Faith was not able to be with us tonight, so she will give a two-month report at our next meeting. So, thank you, Jory.
Jeez. Back on. Oh, no, you're still on.
Yep, back for the superintendent's good news report. So, a lot of great things going on throughout the district. So, starting with earlier this week, West, Oshkosh West honored over 130 students at its annual 180-degree award ceremony, celebrating those students who have improved their GPA by at least .75 points since last spring. This meaningful tradition started in 2019, recognizes students who have demonstrated significant academic growth and personal commitment to their education. The evening featured an inspiring keynote address from Board Member Molly Schmeltnick, who encouraged students to take pride in their accomplishments and, and let that confidence empower their future growth. So, great awards, and thank you, Molly, for those inspiring words.
It was a seriously cool night. I definitely should go to it.
It was very well done. Arts Corps. Arts Corps educators recently gathered at Vell Phillips Middle School for the program's annual Teacher Field Trip, where they experienced firsthand how thoughtfully designed spaces and innovative teaching approaches are transforming education. Through student demonstration, teacher panels, and hands-on workshops, Vell Phillips emerged as an exemplar of how arts integration can revolutionize learning while supporting teacher development and student engagement. Chapter two of our CKLA field test video series is now available, featuring teachers sharing their firsthand experiences with the new science of reading-based curriculum. In the latest installment, educators discuss how CKLA's immersive stories and adaptable approach are, are driving increased student engagement while supporting diverse learning styles through integrating reading, writing, listening, and speaking activities. You can find the video on our Facebook page or on our website. South Park Middle School marked its 10th Annual Greek Week with students and staff competing in Olympic-style events representing ancient city-states. From chariot races to dodgeball tournaments, this cherished tradition united the school community through friendly competition and team spirit. Jefferson Elementary recently welcomed community volunteers for special read-aloud sessions that brought stories to life for excited students. Beyond enjoying guest readers, students engaged in interactive reading challenges from genre classification to vocabulary building. The successful event showcased how community involvement can inspire students' enthusiasm for reading. So, thank you to all the community members who came in and participated. A number of our Oshkosh West student athletes recently signs, signed letters of intent to participate in college athletics next fall. We're excited to see all of their hard work pay off and look forward to their continued success at the collegiate level. Our district recently enhanced, enhanced our emergency preparedness by installing overdose aid kits, known as OAK kits, in the middle and high schools, in, in all of our middle schools and high schools. Last week, we hosted an impactful community conversation at Vell Phillips Middle School, featuring state leaders, as well as community leaders who shared personal stories and highlighted the importance of this life-saving resource. Following comprehensive staff training, these kits represent an important step in our commitment to emergency preparedness. Our own Dr. Sam Coleman, our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, joined 21 other distinguished Black leaders at the state's Capitol Annual Black History Celebration, where he was honored for his transformative work in education and literacy across Wisconsin. As a tireless advocate for high-quality education and literacy initiatives in both Oshkosh and throughout the state, Dr. Coleman's dedication to ensuring all students have access to excellent learning opportunities continues to make a profound impact on communities throughout Wisconsin. And you can see his citation from the Wisconsin Assembly on the right-hand side there. So, some congratulations for Dr. Coleman on that. Well done.
Excuse me, is that the Vell Phillips statue?
That is the Vell Phillips statue, yes. And I think that was strategically positioned, I think, Dr. Coleman, yes? All right, well, well played, well played. All right, over to Roosevelt. Roosevelt's 4th graders put on their inventor hats during the CKLA literacy unit, designing creative solutions for everyday problems and presenting their innovations to classmates. From flying robots to solar-powered propellers, students showcased their understanding of the invention process while practicing essential presentation and problem-solving skills. And that will come back in just a second. That's a little bit of a glitch. And over to Oshkosh North. Oshkosh North's green and gold jazz bands provided the opening set for this year's Bootleggers Ball. Our student musicians helped transport audiences back in time with their big band jazz performances, setting the perfect tone for the evening of dancing and entertainment. So, thank you to the Oshkosh North musicians who helped kick off that night. Last night, we kicked off our community engagement for our April referendum sessions with the first of 10 community information sessions, where attendees learned about the district's facilities, needs, and proposed solutions. Among the highlights was valuable input from the music educators from Oshkosh North and Vell Phillips, who shared firsthand perspectives on the impact an auditorium would have on student opportunities and learning. As a reminder, a dedicated referendum webpage is available on our district website. Community members are encouraged to attend an upcoming session to learn, to learn more and have their questions answered about this important decision for our district's future. And finally, just some of the places that I've had the good fortune to be able to visit in the last couple of weeks. So, again, thank you for those invites, and I look forward to continuing the great work that's going on across the system. That concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Niemann, referendum updates.
I'm here to provide an update on our referendum information campaign, specifically ensuring that our community is informed. We're focused on implementing a comprehensive communication plan. So, as Dr. Davis mentioned, our in-person sessions have started. We've scheduled 10 of them, varying from a lengthier presentation and Q&amp;A session and drop-in sessions where you can just get your question answered. Recognizing that it's challenging to fit schedules and schedules are very busy, we also realize that another component, and a critical important, is making sure that information is widely available, so folks can access it at a time that's best for them and in the way that's best for them. So, in addition to those sessions, we'll also be providing a video recording of the session, and that'll be posted on our website, as well as airing on Oshkosh Media, on their YouTube channel, and regularly leading up to the referendum, so folks can tune into that. And then in addition to that, it's, you know, making sure that all of our resources are available on our website. So, as we've said before, we do have a comprehensive website available. Just want to draw attention to, within that, there's several sub-pages that folks can dive far into all the information, from project details, tax impact, frequently asked questions, session information, how we got here in our facilities work, as well as voting information and downloadable resources. In addition to the website, we have a dedicated hotline that folks can call, as well as an email. So, if you want to ask questions or request a conversation that way, we are happy to do that and respond what works for you and our schedules. And then in addition to that, we're also doing comprehensive and targeted mailers. So, the first for Oshkosh residents should have started to arrive last week. They might be still coming in if you haven't gotten yours yet, but that was sent to every resident household, a postcard that lists the scope of the referendum, as well as upcoming information sessions. And then we'll also be providing a comprehensive newsletter, again, knowing that folks prefer to have their information in many different forms, so that's a hard copy that provides all of the information, can get your questions answered and things like that. In addition, we also have a variety of display boards that will be available in our locations, as well as at, with community partner organizations. So, we appreciate our community partners that are focused on just making sure that residents understand the scope and, and have the information available to them. And I would say the final piece is obviously, again, all about meeting people where they are, so engaging in our social channels and newsletter outlets from both the district standpoint and our schools as a way to, again, get resources out there and help ensure that everybody can make an informed vote on April 1st.
I just want to encourage people to go and make it to these sessions and to bring your questions with you and to get factual. Not that all information isn't factual, because there's certainly factual and factual and unfactual information out on the World Wide Web or Facebook or whatever, but please go and take your questions and get answers. I've been encouraged... from people in different spaces I hadn't before about the referendum, once they became more informed, which they should. So, I appreciate all these sessions, and I think we should have as many as we can, so that people can be informed, because the results of this will have an impact on the community, a big impact. So, hopefully, everyone gets the information before they vote.
I have a question. Stephanie?
I got mine in the mail the other day, and I thought it looked fantastic, nicely done. I was so excited when I saw that. I had a question on the hotline. What are the hours for the hotline?
So, if staff isn't available, it gets you into a voicemail, and Assistant Superintendent Julie Conrad tries to respond to those as quickly as possible. So, if you don't get an answer, anyway, so...
That's awesome. That's new. We haven't done that before, have we?
We have.
Oh, we have? Okay. My other question was regarding the tax impact, and there's been a lot of misinformation out there saying, "Oh, there really is going to be a tax impact," and there's not. So, do you have an easy-to-read and distribute flyer on why there's no tax impact and that we are being fully transparent with that?
Yeah, so that's certainly, we're hearing those questions, and our focus is on providing information that's easy to understand. So, we will be pushing out a series of shorter videos that just help hone in on some of those hot topics. So, we'll certainly be looking to provide that in that capacity, as well as other resources, again, just to get that helpful information.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sorry, excuse me. If people either can't come to these sessions or want maybe to have someone come talk to their group, is there a way that they can do that?
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention that. So, Dr. Davis is regularly presenting to local organizations and businesses. If you go to our website, you know, our email address is there, you can request a meeting, and we accommodate that. Either Ryan's not available, someone on staff to be able to do that. And we certainly want to be able to, again, meet people where they are and be able to connect with however many groups and individuals that we can.
And are there opportunities to connect on weekends?
So, we will actually be at the Winter's Farmers Market starting this Saturday, and then in the three remaining up until the vote. So, that'll be an opportunity for anybody, if you're going to the farmers market or maybe make plans to do that, a great community event, and stop by and chat and get your questions answered.
That's cool.
Thank you. I was able to attend part of last night's session, and I was really impressed with the PowerPoint, as well as with the display boards. I thought those were very well done. Obviously, there was some updating to those since the last time the board had seen those collectively as a board. And I'd echo what Mr. Wright said relative to getting accurate information. Unfortunately, we live in an era where it's very easy to disseminate disinformation or misinformation, and then for people to take that and run with it. And so, I would encourage people to go to the district's website, contact Dr. Davis, and make sure that you're getting accurate information on which to base a decision, and not something that's on some random internet post somewhere. Thank you.
I just, to your point, Barb, I think it's important to remind people that the district's role in all of this is to provide the facts and the information, and that is exactly what their intention is. And there may be groups organizing on the other side to share information as well, or opinions, but the role of the district and district staff is to simply share the facts and the future and implications of this. But, just to clarify for the community what the role is.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, I did get the postcard, too. You had mentioned there's going to be a newsletter also that's going to go out to everyone. Do you have an idea of, just roughly, what is the budget for the information? I'm assuming printed material is kind of the, the rest of it seems like staff time or the website. There's not really an expense to that. What's the budget for us for the printed material? Do you have any idea?
I don't have that, and we can certainly reply to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Achievement gap reduction. Dr. Coleman.
All right. Good evening to the board. You received a report regarding the achievement gap reduction grant that a number of our schools receive to support student learning and student achievement. I'll just provide a little bit of information or just an overview of the achievement grant reduction grant, and it's used here in our school district. So, I'll just share that in 2015, Wisconsin Act 53 and Act 71 established the achievement grant reduction, achievement gap reduction grant program. This is the evolved version of the original Sage grant that schools received, and that was under a previous Wisconsin statute that provided funds to school districts to support students and instructional outcomes where higher numbers of poverty or student need and then gaps in achievement persisted as a result of either socioeconomic status or what we now report in our school report cards as students in our target groups where we see significant gaps. So, the report that you received highlights the mid-year update of our schools and their current use of the achievement gap reduction grant funds. There are three strategies that those funds are aimed to use to support. One would be for tutoring, so direct support to students. The other strategy would be to reduce class sizes, and then the other strategy would be to provide professional development or instructional coaching. So, for schools who receive and leverage these grants in service of reducing gaps in achievement, at least one of those three strategies would need to be used. So, I also just want to make sure that we understand that while there are some schools that use the class-size reduction as an opportunity to address student needs in a smaller setting, we know that that is not a strategy that is used across all of our schools that receive this grant. And I know that there were some questions about how we make those determinations about class-size reductions in which schools. And so, I'm happy to speak to either those questions or any other questions that you might have about the report.
Dr. Hes?
Well, I'll ask it.
All right.
Could you tell us how you make that determination of what class size, which schools?
Sure. So, the school itself would have to have the capacity to have the number of classrooms available to distribute students in an 18-to-1 space. So, there are, some of our schools, Jefferson, for example, we, not in every single class, but we try to use that as a strategy at Jefferson. The reality is, at Monomie Elementary, where we might want to see that strategy utilized, we know that just the square footage and the number of rooms and the number of students wouldn't allow for, we would just need many more classrooms to be able to support that. So, space matters, and then also the staffing model for those schools then also would impact our ability to, and not just for homerooms or classrooms where students are taught, but music would then matter and specials as students are rotating on schedule. So, those staffing models and space are some of the main determining factors that would allow us to decide if that is a strategy that we could sustain in that school. And then, lastly, the school's overall enrollment. So, a school like Jefferson, which has traditionally trended with an enrollment that would allow us to maintain that number, that's a strategy that we've been able to use. There are other schools who, just their enrollment trends and enrollment patterns, for students to be able to go to their school in their neighborhood, wouldn't allow us to support that model.
Thank you. One other question, Dr. Coleman. I'm still, I think the last time we presented it, maybe at the end of the year, I'm still questioning the measures that we're using. This is the achievement gap reduction program. To me, that seems like there are achievement gaps, and we're trying to reduce them. To me, it would seem like the method of evaluating that is comparing our typical disparities that we do, either the racial or the economic disparities, and our outcome measures here don't seem to be doing the disaggregated sort of, and so, I'm just asking once again, why are these the measures that we're using? What was the rationale behind it?
For the goals or for the...
I mean, for all these reports that we're seeing here for Jefferson, and, you know, we've got reading, the iReady, mathematics, iReady stuff, all this stuff. It seems like what we're focused on is just achievement and not necessarily reducing gaps, per se. And so, I'm struggling, why is that the case? Or was there some reason behind why we chose this as an evaluation metric to look at?
I agree with you. I think that the evaluation protocol that we use should certainly include a very clear and transparent indication of whether or not gaps in achievement are being reduced. So, that is a flaw in the current reporting template that we use, and it's something that I will work with the Department of Public Instruction or our team to create a way that we can include that metric in here. So, when we bring this report back in June, we'll, even if this template itself does not have a revision to address or indicate in what ways gaps in achievement have been reduced, we'll make sure to include that in the report.
Because are these, we pick these, or is this the DPI telling us?
This looks like a DPI.
It's DPI.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I think I'm going to hold most of my questions, because in a couple of weeks, I believe, we're getting the overall district-wide information on how we're doing on growth and everything related to both literacy and math. But I'm curious if you want to speak at all on, basically, when you see things that maybe are not quite where you would want them to be, what kind of techniques are being utilized to address that, maybe in the moment or throughout the rest of the year and moving forward?
Yeah, and if you'll allow, when I have the full team who can speak to specifics, especially at specific schools where we might see higher numbers of students who receive linguistic services based on their ESOL service participation or special education services. So, when we bring that report to the board at the end of this month, we'll give some details around how that looks in our various schools.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Hes.
I'm sorry. This may be a question that would be answered at a later time as well, and that is, I know we've heard Dr. Davis talk about how we need to make sure that the community is involved in helping the district. This isn't just the district's issue, it's the community issue, that we need to improve literacy in our math throughout the district, and certainly, parents have a role to play, as certainly the schools do. I'm wondering, we've heard, and I know there's another upcoming session for people to be able to volunteer in the schools, there was one held last year. At some point, I'd like to see something in writing regarding a plan to bring volunteers into the schools to help with this, or to, if it's a question of raising funds for certain schools, how that's going to be, but I just think we would like to hear something of a plan as to how we're going to get the community more involved, whether that's service organizations or parents or PTO groups. But I'd like to see something along those lines. As someone who would like to volunteer, I'm not even sure how I do that in the schools. I've offered in one school, and they don't get back to me. So, maybe they don't need help, but I think it's important to be open and transparent and have a plan as to how we're going to engage the community, since community engagement is one of our KPIs, and I would see this as a subset of that. So, how is that going to happen?
Yep, and I'll, so I will work with Dr. Davis and Director Miller to bring back a report that indicates how our plans and our processes would be leveraged to increase volunteerism, and I think in the context of this report, also just talking through how that would be a strategy used at specific schools to address what we know to be persisting gaps in student achievement.
Thank you. And that doesn't need to be for the next board meeting? As I said, it can be at some future date to be determined.
Yeah, I think an appropriate time for that would be in Director Miller's, when we do the equity plan review. When he comes up and does that, we can roll that into part of that presentation. So, what I'm hearing is, again, getting a defined process, starting with a community volunteer that would be interested in engaging, you know, and using skills into our schools in some capacity, what that process is, being able to get that teased out, and then being able to have some metrics of how we're working through that. Is that accurate?
Yes, thank you very much.
Question real quick. So, is it fair to say that we are bound to what the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction requires us to do and state statutes? So, I noticed in your report, if you click on that link for the achievement gap, we are required by DPI. So, it's not just Dr. Coleman's achievement gap, it's really at the DPI level. Is that correct?
Correct. So, state statute directs how we use, state statute is what directs the availability of these funds that districts can apply for, and then there are specific uses of those funds. And so, those three strategies, the tutoring, class-size reduction, and then coaching or professional development, those are the options per statute in the way that the funds are allocated to districts that we can use. There, I'll be honest, there are critiques out there about the impact that those strategies have, not just here in Oshkosh, but every school district that applies for these funds, and not just when it was AGR, back when it was Sage. And there are interesting studies out there to show whether or not that has made a difference in schools' ability to narrow or address gaps. And I'll, when we bring our report in June, I'll be sure to include that information, so that we are providing certainly insight about what we're doing, but at a broader level, critiques and reactions that school districts around the state have offered, as we talk about the way the statute is written and how schools use these funds.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yeah. I know we've talked about this quite a bit, and I'm looking forward to getting real numbers, I guess, to see where we're at in a few weeks or whenever that report comes out. But I also felt compelled to comment about how we look at data based upon some stuff I've been reading about meeting kids where they're at, and that this is really a community-wide initiative. Like, we, parents drop their children off at OASD, and then we do the best that we can as an educational institution to try to get them to, you know, their highest ceiling, right? And in the meantime, we get reports here as a school board, and we look at them objectively, and we'll look at where our literacy rate is, right? Which we could say, and the state and the national numbers might say, everyone wants theirs to be higher, right? But then, we can look at our growth number, and our growth number is better than most other places in the state, right? So, I just want to comment, when we're looking at data and numbers and statistics, it's real easy for us to all cherry-pick, or the community to cherry-pick certain parts of them that look really good, or to cherry-pick certain parts of them that look really bad, but there's a big picture out there, you know? And when I'm looking at this new data, hopefully, we can paint that picture the best that we can, so that the community can understand, like, okay, we had 800, let's say, 700 kids that are just learning how to speak English because they're in an ESOL program, right? Like, do we expect them to automatically be proficient or advanced in literacy when they're just learning a new language? I mean, those types of things are real parts of data and conversations that I think we have to continually have to get a true picture of where the district is at, rather than just, okay, we're at 45%. Everyone's going to be like, "Well, that's horrible. 55% of your kids aren't where they need to be." And we always, always want it to be higher, but what's the big, what's the big picture behind that? I mean, we all have our personal stories. Like, I can share, my kid came home from middle school a few weeks ago and was jumping through the roof because all, their whole grade there, or their middle school, beat all the literacy scores they had from the prior year, and they were super happy. And then, my son's school, middle school, school said, "Well, you guys are never going to catch our score." So, it was a little bit of a competition they're having literacy-wise. And those are great public school stories, right? And I love having my kids in public schools, but certainly, someone else can take a whole bunch of other bad stories that'll probably get a whole bunch more hype than... get a whole bunch more hype than the good ones and we can paint the picture that might be skewed in one direction or another. So I'm sorry, that was a really long rant. I didn't plan on doing that, that's off the cuff, but those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and if I could just react very briefly to that, for those who haven't had an opportunity to look at the National Assessment of Educational Progress Report for the State of Wisconsin, as a state, our, our literacy levels of proficiency are at about forty-five percent. And in Oshkosh, our, our numbers are consistent with where we're, where we're tracking with the state. And as I shared with the group earlier today, we're not making peace with those numbers and we know that that is an issue. We know that we can do better as a system and I appreciate and want to amplify your point that we can't do that alone as a district, especially when we look at what the research suggests are contributing factors to a student's level of literacy. So there are some subject areas that we know, if it's science, for example, a student's science proficiency or social studies proficiency is directly correlated to the instruction that they're getting. Literacy is certainly directly correlated to the instruction that students are getting plus a number of other factors that determine how students develop language proficiency, the amount of language that students use in school, outside of school, exposure. And so I, I want to make sure that we also are managing expectations when we think about all of the factors that influence literacy and that we zero in and take accountability for the factors that are in our control. And there, and there are many, the materials that we use, the way we teach, the conditions under which we provide that instruction, those are the things that we take responsibility for. And then where we need partnership in our communities and with our families, we also want to make sure that we are being clear and explicit about the need for that partnership because students develop language in and outside of school. And there are things that we can do as a community to make sure that that language development in and outside of school is, that they're leveraged to improve beyond this forty-five percent level of proficiency. But again, I want to be clear, we are not making peace with where we are with our gaps and with our overall proficiency. We can do much better. And the report that we shared at the Education Committee does show some of our initial results of the efforts that we're currently working to, to scale across our system, especially with our early elementary grades and knowing that a percentage of our schools are piloting core knowledge language arts. And as we increase and scale that next year across our entire elementary school structure, we expect to see improved outcomes. And so the growth right now that we see is promising, but we haven't seen that growth move the bar as far as proficiency yet. And we talked about that at Education Committee and so I, again, want to acknowledge that we, the efforts that we are committed to, we believe that we're doing what we need to do in our control right now and that will look different in year one, two, and three of the strategy that we're implementing.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I think my statement was just centered around that this, there's a big picture.
Absolutely.
And I certainly don't want us to hide any of the things that we're not doing as well, but I also don't want the things that we're not doing as well as we should to overshadow all the good too. You know what I mean? Because that's certainly there as well. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to Mr. Nihans. Budget variance update, please.
Good evening. Tonight's budget variance report is for the financials through January. All the funds continue to run fairly similar to what they have the, the past few months. One thing you will notice in the report on the operating funds, there were three payrolls in January, so that is throwing off the variance number slightly. I still would anticipate we've been tracking around somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand to about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, excuse me, deficit when you end the year. I think that's more reflective than the number in your report. One thing I do want to go through on the operating funds, because we did just last month when we talked about our audit, one of the strategies for improvement in the audit was making more timely and more regular grant claims. You will start noticing that with this report. If you look on the first page of your report, on the top portion of that under the revenues, if you look at the line on the federal sources, you can see last year we did, we had just under one point four million of revenues at this time. This year, we're at just about two point nine million. That's all because we've been intentionally trying to file claims quicker within the title grants and the special education grants, which is all part of that audit in the audit report. So we are making progress. We're probably not where we would like to be as far as ideally, but at this point, we've more than doubled what we've done in the past. So we are getting there, we're making progress. Just want to make sure we point and make that connection on the report. On Fund Fifty, I would anticipate that we're going to see a fairly significant deficit at the end of the year. We are struggling right now as most food districts are, or food service departments are. The cost of food has gotten out of control, so there's really not a whole lot you can do about it. We do as much as we can and, and obviously we're buying bulk from some pretty good vendors, but the, the cost has just gone up significantly. And the way the CEP program works, because it's just to set them out, there's no adjustments at all for that. So I would anticipate seeing the deficit continuing throughout the school year. From everything we are hearing, this will be a calendar year-long situation, so we will make sure we budget much higher than what we typically would for food costs as we look at next year's budget and budget process.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said it's challenging to get the reports in in a timely manner, going back to your initial report. What makes it difficult? You said you've doubled how many you've put in, but what, what makes it challenging or difficult?
The, the challenging for, for a large district like this, the challenging part is there's many moving parts within the grant, especially when you look at the special education grants, the flow-through in the preschool. And to optimize the grant, you're trying to make sure that you budget items that you don't get aid on. So there's only certain items that you get aid, so any kind of supply, we would buy any, any kind of equipment, those kind of things, we don't get extra aid for. We get aid on personnel. So you try to build your budget, not putting aidable objects into the grant, because now you're losing somewhere between twenty-nine and thirty-two percent of additional aid that you would get if you left it off the grant. So to get your budget in the DPI, to even get them to try to approve the process and to go through, you're working through a lot of manipulatives on our end of how do we maneuver aidable and unaidable expenses to get the most bang for our buck. That takes a while into the school year and the fiscal year to be really able to get it out. There's also a delay in the beginning, very beginning of the application processes with all of our title funds, because those we rely on enrollment numbers and free and reduced numbers from the private systems. And sometimes it's a struggle to get timely responses back on what we need. Even if they don't participate, we still need some information from them and for them to sign off on what, what is called an assurance, either accepting or denying it. And sometimes that process gets quite delayed before we can continue the next step.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Carolyn?
I forgot what you said, but you said something about our revenues increasing and you said why. I can't remember where it was.
The federal grants?
Yes. Why did we see an increase?
We've gotten much better. We've filed Title One and flow-through claims
That's it, okay.
That typically we wouldn't have submitted at this point in the year.
Okay, so, and that enabled us to get additional revenue, which is good?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mrs. Milton?
For Fund, it's Fund Fifty for food service?
Correct.
How, do you have an estimate? It, it looks to me that we're almost for the year, we are, well, not quite, but, well, no, how, how bad is it going to be by the end of the year, do you think?
Can I get you that specific next month?
Yes.
I, I need, just for the We, we always run two months behind on revenue claims going through the DPI process, so I want to make sure when I answer that, that I actually have the most up-to-date revenue numbers that I have and I don't have those right off the top of my head. So if, if I can get you that answer for next month's report and give you a better, here's truly where we are, even though it won't be reflected in here, because this is more what DPI reflects.
Yeah.
I can give you a better answer.
And is that an appropriate time of the year period? Like with about one quarter left, we'll have a much for anything about?
Yeah, we're, we're still five months from the end of the fiscal year, so, and again, we're, there's not anything we're going to be able to do with this.
Right.
I mean, we're stuck on the revenue. We, we get only what the meals we serve and we get four dollars and seventy cents per meal for a lunch, so I mean, there's nothing we can change on that. So I, I can get those numbers for you next month, if that's all right.
I'm guessing that's got to be a statewide issue, right?
Yeah, everyone is, everyone is
Food costs have got to be hammering every district, right?
Every, every school food service department's going to struggle with this right now.
Do they ever adjust that four seventy per kid per real cost or do school districts just have to eat it? You know what I mean, like?
Yeah, it's, it's based on, it's based on a calculation. So they've been lowering it over the years. When it first came out, it's really, it was meant to be a higher free and reduced district. So when they first came out, the calculation was based on if you were sixty percent free and reduced, you'd be able to go into this program and you'd be break even. Now they've lowered it to, I believe, the current threshold and the calculation is based on a forty percent free and reduced. They do not make many adjustments if, in, that I'm aware of in, in this and I wouldn't expect the current administration to look to increase what these dollar amounts would be.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Just have one question and we, to discuss this right before the meeting, as you know, Drew, under, on the first page, under federal sources, I think you indicated that most of those dollars are grants, so they would be subject potentially to the presidential proclamation to freeze grants moving forward. All that's, that's tied up in the courts now, but obviously this district would lose a lot of money if that were to happen. The money provides services to help our kids and so hopefully we'll be able to retain those federal grants.
Yeah, I've, I've been, the word we've gotten from DPI is just keep filing our claims, we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
And Dr. Coleman, school calendars.
All right. Good evening again. The, our report that you have before you summarizes the draft calendars that we are asking the board to consider for approval with the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar being what we would adopt for approval and then the twenty-six, twenty-seven would be accepted as a draft with the intention to approve that formally next year in November. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the report that you have before you or processes to develop the calendars that are included in the report.
And the approval would be at the next meeting, so
That is correct.
For your, for your discussion, in case there's any questions on it.
I have a question. I wasn't really prepared to ask this question, but it just came to my mind. When this first had come out, I had received a handful of calls from teachers throughout the district here, you know, asking questions or, or just kind of, you know, giving their input on this. And I'm just wondering if you're able to provide a little bit more clarification or information as far as how you are incorporating? I know that, you know, during the meetings of like OEA and whatnot, this is a big topic. I'm just wondering if you can clarify the, the incorporation of the teachers that are actually going through this PD. You know, I know that there was a, a little bit of angst with some PD days in summer or June or July, I think it was something like that.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if you can just kind of share how you're incorporating and taking a lot of the teacher feedback into consideration when doing this?
For sure, yep. And, and thank you for the opportunity for me to address that. So what Mrs. Dewitt is referring to is just there, there's certainly, there's been outreach from members of our teaching staff with questions about the number of professional development days specifically in August is what I've heard.
I could have had that date wrong, that month wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the summer.
August, July will be for our administrators. Haven't heard from our administrators yet about July, but August for teachers. And so a couple of things, so we have all employee groups represented on the calendar committee and what we consider would be the number of teacher contract days and then with those number of teacher contract days, we allocate days that teachers are using their contract days specific for direct instruction that are provided to students and then days that would be used for our paid holidays, which would be the five paid holidays I indicated in the report. And then those remaining days are for professional development. We can allocate the days of our calendar and the days of that contract, you know, differently. So if, for example, the, the options that the calendar committee looked at were having fewer professional development days during the, the school year and using those as instructional days or extending the school year longer into June. So there are a range of options that members of the calendar committee looked at and what you have before you as a draft, that's what the calendar committee and members of our employee groups who are represented in that calendar committee came up with. And so we don't always have perfect consensus on that, so I just want to, want to be clear on that. And we also don't put a vote out or, or a survey out at this time to all staff to weigh in on, on what they would like the calendar committee to consider. So your question brings up just an idea and, and an action that I will take going forward and that would be surveying staff and getting more staff feedback ahead of time so that when the calendar committee convenes to make those decisions, we have staff survey data to consider when weighing in on that.
I think that's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson said at the, the last meeting that you've never denied anyone that wanted to be on the calendar committee, so the calendar committee is growing.
The calendar committee is growing and certainly any, anyone who wants to be a part of that committee, they are welcome. And we also know that there are, are some people, I'll also be transparent about some feedback that we heard, that some people indicated that they would rather work through the representatives at the calendar committee because it might feel intimidating to come into a room and there are that many people and administrators present. Or staff members don't have the capacity to commit to all of the dates that the calendar committee meets just based on responsibilities that they might have to their family or if they work outside of, another job outside of this. So there are many reasons why people wouldn't be able to commit and one of the asks that we have is for people who are interested in being on the calendar committee, that they commit to attending all of the meetings that we have. And I know that that places limitations on people's ability to participate.
I had a lot of reach out to myself from teachers and staff and I'm not a part of this committee or whatnot. So I was wondering, since this is an open discussion, what was the committee members' thoughts on the calendar? thoughts on the calendar? If you're willing to share.
The education committee or the calendar?
Yeah, the education committee. If you guys are willing to share.
Yep, I'll yield to the members of the education committee, too.
Well, I mean, I think we got lots of feedback, and I think there's recognition that it's a, it's a tough calendar for this year, and I think there are a lot of factors that go into it. I also think there is a lot of discussion about if we are having professional development, it darn well better be effective and intentional and high-quality professional development, and I trust Dr. Coleman implicitly on that, and I know that we have not done that in the past, and so, I don't think that just adding professional development is, is the answer. I think we need to have high-quality professional development, and I do trust Dr. Coleman to ensure that that happens. But I do think that there was a lot of challenge looking at that, another week of, of class, or not class, excuse me, of teacher being in the buildings at specific times, and there were two, multiple things that seemed to account for that. I also, some of the feedback that, or I shouldn't say feedback, some of the things that we talked through is, it was the calendar committee that proposed this, and everybody knows it's not perfect. We offered like, oh, well, you, could you switch out these? And then the board, the committee kind of was like, well, that's not our role to, and so, that's where it kind of left from, from the committee, from those who were there.
Is that your thoughts?
Yep.
To Tim?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay.
I think there was some sense that maybe we were, as a committee, as a board committee, getting more into the weeds than needed to be.
Yeah.
And that if this was the consensus, not necessarily a major, well, consensus usually means majority, that not necessarily unanimous, but if this was the consensus that people could live with, then it wasn't our role to start tinkering with a day here or a day there.
The only thing I would also add is, we, from the committee, I think that that's where their admin, I had the feeling that there was a, a hope that we had, would approve two-year calendars. They thought that that was kind of like, the board had been asking that, and that's, we kind of came to the compromise of let's get the tentative one out for the next year, and then finalize earlier, get the work done now, look for what issues are coming up, so we can give staff and families much more notice in the future. So, it's kind of like a rolling one-and-a-half-year calendar schedule, and I, I think that that's a good solution so far for, hopefully, that'll be a good solution for our district longer term.
I just have a quick question. Does DPI provide any guidance on minimum professional development days or anything?
No, not for professional development days.
Just for instructional hours?
Instructional hours, and then what we can actually count as instructional hours. So, one of the things that we'll bring to our policy and governance committee to take a look at is we have policy in our, our school calendar that makes reference to language as student contact days, but DPI doesn't acknowledge contact days. DPI acknowledges instructional hours, and so, I think there are differences in interpretation around district policy for what contact days mean, and then DPI's expectations for hours of instruction. So, this calendar is built on the minimum hours of instruction, instruction that DPI requires, and that, that is a change from how we've applied and interpreted district policy in previous years. So, so that would be state statute that we follow from the Department of Public Instruction. And when I facilitate the calendar committee meetings, my responsibility is to use state statute, district policy, and our employee handbook as the parameters that we use to develop our calendar.
Awesome, thank you.
I, I do, I, I want to explicitly point out that there will be, I think a lot of people in the past have always felt like we have, like, had a cush calendar, and it turns out maybe we did in Oshkosh, because we were miscalculated from everything I can see, the idea of instructional hours and utilizing conference days, conference time as instructional hours, which was wholly inappropriate and contrary to not only DPI guidance, but also state law. And this is a correction that has been found, and so, there will be more instructional hours that unfortunately we cannot, I mean, fortunately for student outcomes, that they will have instructional hours instead of con, um, conference times, and I'm glad that we are very clearly going to be complying with the law moving forward.
Yeah.
Well, I really appreciate you guys sharing that for a couple of reasons. One, because everyone thinks when an item is discussed that, and that we're not talking about it, and really, it's been talked about a whole bunch in committees. So, thank you guys for sharing your, what you guys all discussed there.
I have a comment and a question. One of the things that this board does, which I'm really very proud of, is that we do a self-evaluation twice a year using the School Perception Survey. And one of the items on there asks if our actual, um, one of those items on there gets at whether or not we have a collaborative process when it comes to student and staff hand, or staff handbooks. And to me, involving staff in the calendar conversations is an extension of that, even though we're, we don't self-evaluate on that. And some, some people in this room remember when the district was involved with something called the Village Partnership, where we had a district improvement committee, we had school improvement and effectiveness committees, and people came together, and they, they talked about calendar, and they talked about work hours and expectations. So, I think that this concept of collaborating with all the employee groups is really important and does come out of that work. My question follows up with what Mrs. Smutnik was talking about. You provided us with links to the DPI administrative rule for hours of instruction for public schools, and I went to that site, then I went to the statute. I, I would really like to know when that administrative rule went into effect, or when that law went into effect from the, the statute that I was looking at. And I would also note, based on the information that was shared with the education committee, that we have roughly 169 student contact days, which is about five fewer days than many of the districts around us. So, we can't teach them if they're not there, so we need to have them in school on those 169 days, so that we make the most of each of those days, and we have to, we need the professional, quality of professional development, so that the teachers can effectively move them forward.
I will get details on when this administrative rule went into effect, and when the state statute stipulated this administrative rule. I know that is, for the six or seven years that I've been doing school calendars, I've followed this, so it's at least six or seven years old, but I could get more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Great discussion. Didn't get it fast enough. I was going to pull it up. Okay, other reports from committees. Facilities and finances tomorrow, so do we have a facilities and finance from last month?
We had a report at the last meeting, I believe.
Right, so we're good there. Okay, education?
We had one at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think we had all those at that.
As well.
Policy and governance or legislative? Perfect.
Nope.
Don't want to forget anyone. Okay, on to workshops. Mrs. Johnson, what did I do? Oh, for heavens, all you lovely people sitting here, and I skipped them. First of all, we have a non-agenda-related public forum. Total of 45 minutes will be allotted for non-agenda and agenda public forum. Thank you. Clearly state your name, the city you reside in, the topic you wish to discuss. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Clearly state and concise the matters concerned, and you'll be allotted three minutes. And remember, the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. If you would like to pursue any situation, you certainly can contact the superintendent's office. First tonight, we have Paula Sweeting.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. My name is Paula Sweeting, Oshkosh. About one month ago, I contacted our child's elementary school principal with a concern about a book that our child brought home from the media center. We had a good discussion, and I was able to address my concern. He recommended I complete a formal request to review the material. As part of the formal request, it was stated I include a specific description of the concerns I had with the material. And forgive my language, see page 33. You know gum is a girl thing, right? Ass wipe, shouts Carboy. Carboy smiles. Oh, it's a gay thing, just calling it like it is shithead, says Carboy. See page 75. May I have your poo deer? Your fecal matter, is it on the seat of your pants? I can smell it, it smells absolutely divine. Ashamed of a little poo, now what is that intoxicating smell? Did you fart? See page 298. Are you gay? Same if I'm bi, or trans, or just whatever I am. Considering these statements, in addition to the intensely inappropriate subject matter throughout the text of this book, it is clear there is no room for this material in any elementary school. I received an update from the principal approximately 10 days later, stating this book was deemed acceptable for the media center. The principal stated that he had included the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction on his email correspondence, and so, I addressed this person on that same day. I explained how per, how per Board Policy 2522, I was appealing the decision made by the building principal, and that I would await a response from his office. His current reply stated that a determination will be reached and communicated to me within 60 to 90 days of January 28th. Interestingly, this book is not available at any other elementary school media center in OASD, only in Oakland Elementary. I need to know why this book is allowed here, and I also need to know how it can take up to three months for this review. A simple state search of the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction shows an unpaid citation for a March 2024 violation. Now, he may decide...
Ever getting into specifics, please?
He may decide, thing, important things can wait, however, this is urgent and needs to be addressed immediately. I encourage this board and the leadership of our district to review the citation origin, and I am adamant this book is removed from the shelves of Oakland Elementary immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Ackman.
Good evening. Laura Ackman, Mount for Liberty, Larson, Wisconsin. I would like to thank the board. I understand that you recently rescinded the Biden-Harris Title IX Policy 2264. However, you reinstated 2260, which needs language modifications. In order to be compliant with the current laws, I would ask you the following. I am requesting the board to change Policy 2260 by eliminating the term gender identity from your policy. The policy, the board does not discriminate on the basis of sex, including sexual orientation or gender identity. I respectfully ask you to remove gender identity from this policy. Federal law does not recognize gender identity, and Wisconsin state law does not recognize gender identity. In the Donald Trump's executive order ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schooling, it states, "My administration will enforce the law to ensure that recipients of federal funds providing K-12 education comply with all applicable laws prohibiting discrimination in various contexts and protecting parental rights." It also states they will eliminate federal funding for illegal and discriminatory treatment and indoctrination in K-12 schools, including based on gender ideology and discriminatory equity ideology. In other words, if you do not remove the gender identity language, I believe your federal funds will be at risk. The second item I would like to address is the following. I support Dr. Herzog's commentary at the last meeting stating that we have anti-bullying and anti-harassment policies in our district, and that no matter what group a person belongs to, we need to respect the rights of everyone. That was in place before and after the Title IX policy change. I find the statement made by board member Molly Smutnik exaggerated untrue. In her comedy, commentary, she suggests that transgender students may not be safe and may commit suicide because of the changes in Title IX policy. She was very empathetic to this community, so much so that she stated she cannot support unjust rules, policy, or laws. But where was her empathy and concern for the 4,500 Oshkosh female students when she voted to allow boys and girls private spaces? I will remind you, there was none. She hates, uh, she states that this change will facilitate persecution in our schools. I say to all the Oshkosh parents and residents, elections have consequences. You have a board member stating she will not uphold the law. Oshkosh School District has policies that protect all children. The change back to the original intent of Title IX protects girls' safe places. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christopher Carnes, oh, there he is. Hi, Christopher.
Hello, everyone. Christopher Carnes, Oshkosh. My son goes to Tipler, and you all heard Principal Umentum say that Brian Casey has to roar like a tiger, right?
Yes.
Okay, we all heard that? I'll make sure he knows that. That's first off, for your statement tonight, it's powerful and great. I know it was not easy to do and was very difficult, but I thank you for doing it. It seems that, and I don't know this for sure, but based on post, it seems the goal of the statement you delivered was for mistrust in the community, to sow division and mistrust about a lot of things, including the referendum. You can't create a problem and then play the victim in this. The victims of this deception are the students. The students, students first. When we do this, it, it's not about adults, it's about what happens in the classroom. And we need to make sure, for all the people that are angry and asking for recalls and asking for resignations, that we use that energy to fight against the misinformation and the lies that have been shared, that we focus on making sure this referendum passes, that we double our efforts and triple our efforts to make sure that we share truthful and honest information. If people have questions, there are dates coming up where you can show up and ask questions if you have it. You can talk to staff members. It's important to remember that this district was financially responsible, paying off millions so that we can do a 0% tax increase to the debt levy. This should not cost anybody anything to update these buildings. It's a good thing, I, in my opinion, that we found out now, obviously, about the South Park issue. It is a tremendous safety issue at the moment. In an airport runway zone, that building has to get moved. It has to get rebuilt. It's not safe as it currently is, and will not be safe as it stands. And so, going forward, I am asking, I'm asking our community to come together, to share truthful and honest information, and have real, honest conversations about, about this and many more. Again, students first, and our children and our students deserve better than what has happened, and I thank you again for your statement. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, and we have no agenda-related public forum for this evening. Thank you all that spoke and came to be part of the meeting. Okay, now we have workshops. Staff Engagement Survey by Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll be giving an update on the staff engagement survey that we found this fall. The staff engagement survey contributes 25% of the star rating in this core area of engagement and communication. So, why does employee engagement matter? Engaged employees are motivated, committed, and invested in the success of our students. They tend to work harder, collaborate more, and use innovative, innovative teaching methods, all of which contribute to better student outcomes. Engaged employees help to foster a positive and supportive school climate. When our staff are enjoying what they're doing, it creates an environment where students feel safe, valued, and supported. And as we know, employee turnover can be costly and disruptive, so engaged students are more likely to stay in their positions, reducing turnover, and allowing students to benefit from those long-term relationships with our staff. I'm excited to share this slide. We finally moved from the three-star rating for staff engagement to the four-star rating, and we're currently at that 54%. So, I wanted to start with the celebration, where next time, we're going to turn back a little bit about our history. So, as you know, we do use the Gallup Q12 Employee Engagement Survey, and this is used to measure our employee engagement. It's conducted through Gallup, and it's administered by our CISA6, which is our third-party vendor. We launched it in January of 2021. It is conducted twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring, and it's really a great way, our goal is to... Our goal is to start those conversations with our building supervisors, our principals, and our supervisors of departments, having those conversations with our employees. What do they need? How can we best support them? This slide shares with you, I like to incorporate the 12 questions that are administered on those Gallup surveys. I won't go through each one of those, but they are listed here. As we think about those questions, the Q12 engagement framework is based on a hierarchy of our employee development needs. So you can see all those questions listed there on the various levels, so the basic needs, individual contribution, teamwork, and so on. So as we work through those first three levels and give those supports to our employees, it's really building that level of support and trust. And it's not a phase that you complete and then move from one to two and you're done with one. It's a continuous process as we're working through these. And then as we think about that process, as I shared with you, we conduct this survey twice a year, once in fall, where we're really kind of gaining that baseline, creating where we press starting line. We report the information back to our teams in that December to January in the fall, and then our action plans are implemented. And then we create then the spring cycle to see if those action plans that we put into place made the growth that we were hoping to see, which I'll go over more in the next few slides. This slide shares with you the historical information. So as we started in January of 2021, it shares with you all of our participation, our engagement, the percentage of engaged employees, and then the percentage of actively disengaged. I'd like to point out the participation levels in spring of 2024 and fall of 2024. An action step that we had as a district is we wanted to see what we could do to create a growth in our participation levels. And it was before the spring of 2024 that we decided and acted upon having these start the day of a professional development, allowing our principals to have those conversations and allowing our employees to complete that survey. And that's where we see those increases in our participation rate. So as we think about those departments that don't participate MPV, so as students aren't in our buildings, our food service aren't working those days, our custodial, our maintenance, and some departments here at Central don't participate in professional development. So our next steps and action steps from an HR lens is, how can we get those departments to increase our participation as well? Of the 1,157 participating, we sent out 1,454 invites to participate. So we do have some room to grow. I mean, the numbers aren't bad, but we have some action steps in mind to improve those as well. So as a district, our celebrations are our top two questions. Our top two were employee development, question six, and having a best friend at work, question 10. Professional development. We take pride in what we do. We offer it throughout the school year for our employees, and our employees are sharing that. They appreciate that as well. And then having a best friend at work reflects our strong relationships, having those conversations with our colleagues, with our supervisors, our principals. Now our two lowest scores. What action steps are we doing to address question one, clarity of job expectations? And question two, ensuring our employees have the necessary materials and equipment, which I'll go over in a few slides. This slide is sharing with you some work that I'm doing from HR, is I'm working with our direct level, so our elementary director and our secondary director, to learn what it is we're doing in creating our action steps in our buildings. So what this is sharing is that they too are having that conversation of celebrations of their top two questions, but also addressing their bottom two. These next few bullet points are sharing with you some examples that our buildings are working on as we speak. So one school, one of their two lowest questions was, "The opportunity to do my best every day." An example this principal gave is, they facilitated rounding meetings, so meetings with themselves and that employee to say, "What does doing your best every day look like? And what is getting in that way?" So having those one-on-one conversations. The next, "I have the materials and equipment I need." The example given here was that they conducted an employee survey to identify those specific needs. When I was looking through that PowerPoint presentation that that principal gave, they had a QR code in the PowerPoint slide that that employee could go into and put their name and say exactly what it is they're looking for or they need to be successful, to have the materials. And that third bullet, "I receive recognition or praise." Some example, an example that was given here is, this principal conducted individual one-on-one meetings with all of their employees. To go over, "How do you like to be recognized? Is it in-person? Do you like shout-outs? Do you like to get a, receive a note, an email?" This happens to be one of my two lowest scores from my department. I had those conversations as a team and then had my one-on-ones to say, "How is it?" Because as I had the conversation, I saw an individual getting redder and redder, so I could tell, "Not here, so let's talk about that later." So addressing what action steps I can put into place to recognize my employees and find growth in that area. And then documenting, communicating the action steps, and hopefully reflecting the progress on the next round of Q12 survey questions. So some celebrations. Again, 54% staff engagement, and when we look at this, this is 23% above the national and international averages of those who use the Gallup Q12 survey. From spring 2024 to fall 2024, our actively disengaged employees decreased from 8% to 5%. So really a big celebration there as well. And then really, again, having these conversations. Our employees throughout the district are engaged in this process. You know, celebrate those wins, what we do well and how we can keep going, but really what are the action steps and what do we do for these two bottom questions, or even some in between there? What can we do to improve? Because as you can see from that hierarchy, it's not just the bottom and low that we have to work on, we have to keep going with all of them in between as well. So again, those opportunities for improvement. So as we look at this Gallup Q12 survey, it's really important that we, as an organization in our onboarding, improve our process to share what it is, what is Gallup? Why do we use it? What are these 12 questions? And really looking at our onboarding to create an agenda around those 12. Maybe not all of them, but as I think of our two lowest questions. Number one, "I know what's expected of me at work." Our first thought is, we're going to put each person's position description in that packet that they can review and ask any questions that they have about it. If we're not able to answer it for those individuals participating, taking that back to the principal or supervisor to say, "Hey, this person has this question, how can we support them?" Maybe going to peer coaches, getting that support that they need. So really addressing question one in improving our onboarding process. From day one, that employee feeling supported, knowing exactly what they need to do and having the resources to do it. Implementing those building or department-level one-on-one check-in meetings between building principals and supervisors and employees, again, just continuing that communication, letting employees know that we support them and we're here to help them with whatever it is that they need. And then the third bullet is one that we're having communication on with regards in our HR offices. We have an employee start. What are we doing as a district to have those touchpoints, whether it be in-person, by phone, whether it be day one, day three, week one, week three? You know, we're still creating what that looks like, but we really need to reach out to our employees for them to know that we're here to support. And if we're not able to, reaching out to the building or supervisor for them to know what it is that employees are looking for for support. So some final thoughts. In essence, our engagement isn't just about making our employees happy. It directly influences the quality of our education and the success of our students. Schools with engaged employees tend to have stronger student outcomes, achievement, more stable environments, and a greater sense of community. Thank you.
Very exciting.
I have a question. Oh, you do too. Are we going to say the same thing? Can you go back to that slide, please, on the evolution of our engagement numbers? So at the very last keynote, at the Wisconsin State Association of School Boards Conference, he talked about this, the engagement, and how important it is, and that every organization has a group of the "Oh-yas," which is, you know, we say we're going to do something, and they're like, "Oh, yeah." Right? But you also have, on the other opposite end, you have the "Oh, no. Oh, no, we're not going to do that." And he talked, he was so funny. I'm not giving him justice, but he talked about how the people in the middle are really the ones that you also want to convert, because the people, they're actively recruiting on the bottom. And this slide made me think of his presentation, because the ability to see the disengaged employees go down so dramatically in just a couple of years, that is a huge feather in our cap, because we, every year we've eliminated, and you're always going to have the "Oh, no" groups, right? So, but the fact that we are whittling it down and at the same time increasing our engagement so much, I mean, that is a really big deal, because we are well over the national average by 23%. And I just wanted to put that back up there and say, "That's amazing. Congratulations." And it's a big deal. Thank you.
Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. One of the things we learned, I think it was back in 2021, was that there was a need to clarify what some of these statements meant, because I know there was, we had questions at the time as to what do these mean. Like, "I have the opportunity to do my best every day." Some people didn't understand that. So I know that administration, and you're suggesting it in your last slide there, that as part of the onboarding process, you explain the survey, its origin, and so on and so forth. I think there's a fine line between clarifying what the items mean and telling people how you want to respond to them. It's not like you purchase something from some vendor and then you get a survey asking about customer service, and they strongly imply that they want a top rating, whatever that top rating is. We want people to be honest about their ratings and not pad them, so to speak. So I think it's a fine line there to explain that you're clarifying what these questions mean, you're not telling people how to answer them. And then going back to your...
Can I, Dr. Herzog, do you mind if I just speak to that point?
I don't mind at all.
So I think that's a really important point, and what we're focused on with our departments and with our staff on this is that we certainly want to improve our scores as you move forward. The more important piece to this, though, is making sure that we have engaging work environments and that these numbers are at, we want people to be honest, because that's how we reflect what the environment is that they're experiencing. And we, nobody can, everybody owns their own engagement, and nobody can get better at their own engagement unless they're honest and reflecting in those conversations. So that's what we emphasize as this higher calling for. It's not just about reaching a particular number, it's really creating the best environment that we can, and then using this as a metric to be able to show that. So just wanted to be able to provide a little bit of context for that.
That's great. Thank you. And then going back to your staff report, I had a couple of questions. Under Roman numeral 3E, on your first dot, I don't like to use the term bullet to stay in age with what goes on in certain communities, hopefully not ours. But anyway, 3E, student behavior, the district increased behavior instructional support teachers. Could you, not tonight, but could you at some point give us some background on how many behavior instructional support teachers we have in the district, going back perhaps five years? I know we get updates on suspension data and so on. We don't get data on office referrals and whatnot. And I'm not suggesting we do that, but I would just like to know how many behavior instructional support teachers we have. And we hear all the time that student behavior is different today than it was five years ago and 10 years ago. So how many people are in this role, and how do we measure success with them? Are they seeing fewer behavior problems at the school level? Are they disrupting classrooms less so that teachers can really teach when the students are there and not have to be concerned about clearing a classroom because some student had a problem? So I would like to know, how do we measure success of those groups or results of those So that we have some idea. I mean, we, as a board, we invest in staff, and I strongly support that, but at some point, I'd like to see the results of that.
I'd be happy to pull that information and bring that back. Thank you.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Can you describe again the, when the poll is getting taken, and to what extent has that changed since, say, 2021, that we're...
Am I understanding...
Because you said, fall and spring were given the poll. Did you say that this is like, right when they come in, the principal comes up, and we do some convocation-type thing, and then we do the, when is it getting?
October is our fall, and then May is our spring.
And then, so they're just getting some email invite, and they take it on their professional time, or when are they doing this?
So Dr. Davis puts together a video giving information with regards to the survey, when it's going to be given, and then we lean on our district administrators to kind of share that, as Dr. Herzog shared, that fine line of what these questions mean, because she's correct. We did here in the past that sometimes people didn't understand who my best friend at work meant. And so it wasn't us trying to sway how they answer it, just really trying to give a better understanding of what the questions mean. So then the principal comes out, gives that background information, and then during the PD day in October and in May, I work with CSIS6 on what those dates are. They then offer it to all of the individuals in their building to participate in the survey.
I mean, because I'm, I think similar to Dr. Herzog, I'm approaching it a slightly different way. I'm excited to see the gains in engagement, absolutely. I appreciate that we're asking the same 12 questions, and then in part, those are the questions that you expect the supervisors to then go and kind of guide them towards, "Hey, these are the things that make somebody feel like they're engaged, that they're happy within the environment." I appreciate that. What I always struggle with, though, is that I always expect in a survey like this to see some sort of external validation. And what I would think is, given this substantial increase in engagement, your next presentation, we're going to talk about staff retention, and I don't see what I would expect to see given these particular results. And so that makes me question, are we training people to answer questions in a certain way? And I'm not saying that we're doing it, we're not doing anything wrong. I am excited by this, but I just look for that external validation with a different measure, and I just don't see it in the staff retention results. So that's where I'm questioning how we're giving it. Are we objectively measuring engagement, or are we changing how we're measuring engagement so that we get better results, kind of thing?
And I would see that, just from my feedback and my experience over the last couple of years, I think this, I see this as a leading indicator for us in leading the way. And as you saw, from a retention standpoint, you know, as we would have some transition and also look at the number of actively disengaged people that we have within the system, there's been some turnover, right, within the system. And so some of that is going to be a process as we look at, you know, what exactly we're talking about for engagement, what our expectations are, and as we begin to change culture within the system, like that's going to be, there's going to be some of that natural turnover. So certainly, and Sabrina will talk about retention as, you know, part of our process, we believe that this is a leading indicator for us and that we will see improvements in our retention as we would move forward and be able to have some consistencies with that related to our student results, whether it's literacy, math, or other areas. Because this is something that, again, you know, it's research-based relative to the questions. It's not just an education, you know, type of survey, it's done across industries, really getting at what workers need to be able to be engaged in their local environments. And we want to make sure that we're attentive to that and making sure that we can deliver that, an engaged, you know, atmosphere for all of our employees possible.
Thank you. Just to kind of piggyback a little...
Just to kind of piggyback a little bit, I guess, so out of each, each year we've taken the staff engagement survey, the survey's been administered at the same time and in the same way, right? So, the results are, should be valid comparing year to year, right? And my other questions, I guess I'll wait till the next, next report because I think there might be some variances in how we look at retention versus engagement because we still have, even though we have our highest engagement rate in a long time and is statistically above the national engagement rate, if you figure 44% aren't, right, is 56 and then that'd make 44% of our staff aren't fully engaged, that's still, you know, a bigger, yeah, still, still not a non-significant number. So, thank you.
I was just going to say, you can have a really engaged employee who ends up leaving the district for a number of reasons. Their spouse gets another job, you know, they relocate or, so I see those numbers as very different things, so.
Our most recent, we've had a couple who've decided to be stay-at-home parents, you know, so there are many different reasons why individuals do leave the district.
Right. Yeah. And so, they could have loved everything about the district and, but just made a lifestyle choice, so, yeah, I see those as different things, but.
Why don't we get into the staff retention?
Let's get into it. Yes, let's go. That was my plan.
Excuse me. So, our staff retention does contribute 10% of the star rating of the core area of engagement and communication. So, as we think about the definition of staff retention, it is really our ability to prevent our employees from leaving the district. And what we're doing as a district as far as strategy, strategies to develop to reduce those turnover rates. In this information, I do like to point out that we do not track retirements in these numbers as we, as a district can't and shouldn't stop our employees from retiring, so we don't include that in here. And why does this matter? We need to keep our, we need to keep our best employees in our district attracting and retaining high-quality staff, has a direct impact on our district's ability to advance goals. As a teaching and learning organization, and staff retention also has a direct and positive impact on student learning and engagement. Excuse me. So currently, our star rating is a two in the analysis of our turnover data for 23-24. We had 195 resignations of our 1,533 employees, which represents 12.72 turnover rate. Again, it replaces us at a two-star. And then for informational of our historical, we have the 22, 23 at 12.4% turnover rate and our 21, 22 at 13.1% turnover rate. As we think about these retention and looking at some celebrations, our office created what we call the HR open forums where we, as HR staff, go into each of our buildings throughout the school year. There's no planned agenda, it's open to any conversation, it can be with regards to benefits, it can be regards to contract pay, really anything that they want to come forward. So, just letting people know that we're here to support them and they know the person they can reach out to if they have questions coming up. And then, as I've shared with some of you, we've also created this cross-departmental or cross-union group representation where we brought them together to talk about things that we hope would help to, again, retain our employees. So, how do they want to be recognized? What are some incentives? As they look to the handbook, are there things that they question? We actually met in January and we're scheduling our next meeting in March where we had great conversation about our employee of the year process and ways in which we can improve that. We talked about the possibility of changing, as I've shared with some of you, the paid time off where we currently have it structured in a sick leave and personal day structure. Could it be more of a paid time off bucket per se? There were great topics of what's our incentive to stay, what's our, you know, our vacation schedule, could that be decreased so that way we don't have to wait eight years to get our next week? So, again, great conversation and we'll be meeting again in March where it talks about the next bullet of opportunities for improvement where we're going to collaborate again. Talking about all those, I've asked them to go back to their groups to ask, these are the ones we talked about, are there other things that other employees are looking at? And coming up with our action steps on what we can move forward with. Looking at like, I would like to recommend looking at that paid time off bucket because it really seemed something of interest to most of our 41-week employees. I did share a couple of notes on this slide because I do think that there's some, some ways that we can improve this process. As I've talked to other administrators and we look to these, whoops, I apologize, we look to these star ratings, when we created this, we looked at nationwide information, what's the, what's the normal retention rate? And I'd like to see what this looks like district-wide. I'd like to reach out to our peer districts to see. You know, when we look at this five-star rating of less than 4%, if we use the, the math of the 1,533, we're saying to get to five stars, less than 62 people can leave us in a, at our size. Is that us being realistic? I'm not saying we're going to change it, but I'd like to look into it a little bit more to see if we're setting ourselves up.
Sorry.
No questions?
And I should know this already, but do we include retirements?
No.
Oh, they don't? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes. And then the other piece is, as I've shared with you in the past regarding this process is, as you can imagine, most of our resignations come in that spring timeframe. They want to get it in before the contracts are due and there would be liquidated damages. So, we get a lot of our data at that time. So, we just naturally said, let's wait till the full year is done and we can go forward with that information. Now that we're in year three, just not sure if that's timely. Just because we get a lot in spring, we can possibly look at, do we want to look at this quarterly by semester? Because if we do it in fall and do it in spring, we'll have that data to show. So, that way I can give reports more timely than just giving last year's data. So, those are just a couple of points that we're looking at possibly making improvements to, to this process. Some of the work in progress that I wanted to share is, we did continue our state interviews in 24-25. So, as you might remember, last year we piloted this where we sent out random invites to participate to 75 employees across our buildings, just to get an idea of, were we asking the right questions? Were we getting the information that would be useful so that way we can create those improvements within the district? We did, we sent out 300 this year, again, random. We did not include any of the 75 that we interviewed last year. And of the 300, 150, 156 participated. Those ended in January. So, right now we're pulling that information, coming up with those common themes again of what's going great, what, if you're considering leaving, what are those reasons? What can we be doing as a district again to try and increase our retention rates and lower our percentages and increase our star rating? We continue to conduct our exit interviews, that's been a process been in place since I've been here. Again, kind of going back to our staff engagement workshop, we need to enhance our new employee orientation, having our employees feel supported from day one. We don't want our employees getting their benefit information, pay information and IT, access and badge and all their technology and we ship them off, you know, making sure that they feel supported throughout that process. Conducting position and compensation analysis, a common theme of our pilot year was compensation and just reminding you all of our four-year cycle of our employee analysis. So, our first year was para, this year is NTAA custodial maintenance. We're in the talks of including food service into that second year as well. And then next year will be teachers and the last year will be exam staff and all other staff who aren't incorporated in the first three years. And then that'll be our four-year cycle, constant cycle. And that last bullet is just sharing with you, we continue to listen to our employees. Mr. Neenhouse and I had the pleasure of meeting again with our union groups to talk about questions and concerns and wonderings that they had and we met with them. And one of the things that we heard a lot last year is, we have a lot of phone numbers on our card, which one do I call? When do I call collaborative care? I'm just, you know, is it Prairie State's, is it HPS? So, knowing this, what we did is we partnered with a third-party vendor to create what we call a benefits concierge, that one-stop shop. We have one toll-free number that our employees can call for all of these things plus more, whether it be health-related or benefits questions, co-pays. They made themselves available to us during open enrollment so our employees could work through them to go through and complete their whole open enrollment. Life events, as we know, as we have births, marriages, those events, they can work through, again, this toll-free number. Collaborative care, they can help with that coordination and then there are a few other things. So, just having that one-stop shop to have less confusion for our employees, one number to call and they can be that triage to get them the support that they need. So, that's my presentation on retention. Any questions?
Mrs. Milink.
I guess I sort of have wondering, especially with the efforts for the, the newer employees to do extra work. I'm, I'm wondering if you are, as you're looking at kind of rethinking this KPI, if it would be useful to try to pull that out because it does look like if you, if we keep staff here longer than, especially within three years or, or whatever, they do better. So, I wonder, I'm just wondering if, as you look at it, if that's a one, that's a key point to look at. And I would also wonder, since there is some extra effort going into these newer staff, do we have a sense of if that is in line or out of line of other comparable districts of, I mean, I don't, I'm not surprised that we lose more staff in the first few years of employment, but I wonder if it's higher than others?
I haven't reached out to our districts surrounding or sister, peer districts to find out what their rates are. I for surely can do that in our, especially when we're looking at wanting to improve the timeliness of our data, that's for surely something I can reach out and find out more about.
Cool. Thank you. That'd be great. Mrs. Carolyn?
Yes. So, we know that the, with the engagement survey, that Gallup has a national average for engagement of 32% and we're above that. So, I was wondering like what the average retention rate was in our state. So, I, I asked the Google and it said that, it says that WPI looked at roughly 450 school districts and other K-12 entities over a 15-year period and the average turnover rate per year from 2009 to 2023 was 11.5%. So, because I'm asking this question because like you said, to get to that five-star rating, we'd only have to have 62 people leave. And I don't, I don't think that that's realistic because people make decisions to stay at home with their kids or move to a warmer climate, especially this time of year. So, with the size of our district, you know, I'm wondering what an acceptable turnover rate is. And you said you're going to work on finding that, but just the quick Google search says that in Wisconsin it's 11.5%, which is close to where we are, you know?
And I'll also share with you too, as we, as, when I started with the district, I learned quite quickly, especially when we're going to start pulling this information, that when we entered data into our system about employees leaving, it was termination and retirement. So, they weren't deciphering between resignation, termination, retirement. And then in the notes section, I've also asked if the HR specialist that's assigned to that building, if they can reach out to the employee to ask those questions so that way we can document, was it due to a spouse moving out of state? Was it due to maybe wanting to become a stay-at-home parent? You know, trying to collect that information so that way we know, is it an employee who's leaving disgruntled? Is it an employee who's leaving because they were offered more in a, a surrounding district? You know, all that information's really helpful instead of just knowing this is the number of people who left without really understanding the why behind them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, it seems unlikely that we'll ever get a five-star rating with the size of our district, but we could keep trying.
Absolutely.
Dr. Herzog?
As I reflect on, on this, I think back to a school that I thought had, and it was before we were doing the survey, but it, I think that school would have had a very high rating in terms of staff engagement and staff satisfaction. And there were three teachers, more or less side by side in the same hallway. They all came into the district about the same time, about the same age. And a couple of years before they retired, they announced, we're going at the same time. So, that school lost three veteran staff because they wanted to go out at the same time. Now, that was a retirement, so it wouldn't have been reflected in your numbers. But there are various factors that, that will feed in and cost of childcare. So, somebody may decide they're going to be a stay-at-home parent because of the money that goes out the door for childcare, especially if they have two children. So, I, I think there could be a variety of things that might explain, certainly health of the individual, the spouse, child might, might factor in as well. So, there could be a lot of reasons why people choose to leave. I've had the opportunity to, to serve on a DPI committee known as the Professional Standards Council, which advises the state superintendent on licensing issues. And one of the things that we've heard over the last couple of years is the large number of new staff who leave the profession, not just go to another job, but they leave the profession within the first five years. And so, one of the things that we've been discussing is how do we retain on a state level and also how do we retain on a local level? People who thought they wanted to be a teacher for a lifetime. And so, there's a lot of external variables that, that go into this and, but I appreciate that you're doing basically exit interviews and looking to gather that data. And I think it's also important to look at other industries, which Gallup does, other businesses, it's not just education, as well as looking at data from other school districts. Is our number in the 11 to 12% range comparable? Or is it an outlier? Are those numbers outliers or are they pretty common for businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions for Mrs. Johnson? Thank you. Wonderful reports.
Thank you.
Good information.
Good job.
We have worked our way to the consent agenda resolution. For the consent agenda, the board's been furnished background material on each item as discussed at a previous meeting that we act upon with one vote without discussion.
Call roll.
We need a motion in a second.
Make a motion.
Carolyn and Ray?
Second.
Yeah.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sully?
Aye.
Okay. And we have an individually considered resolution, approval of the 2025 strategic plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. So, I wanted to just remind the board as we look at the 2025 strategic plan and just a review of some of the work that we had talked about a couple of weeks ago related to providing clarity through alignment, which is really what this document should provide for us from a system standpoint. So, again, just some reminder related to how we do that, board responsibility versus staff responsibility and making sure that we're embedding within the strategic plan our 19 key performance indicators and our five-star ratings, which are our five-star targets, if you will, that would be declared on the strategic plan. As a reminder to the board, that sets our long-term goals that we strive for. So, we initiated those five-star ratings as 10-year goals back in 2023. So, we would look at where these goals, we, are things we would want to accomplish by 2033. And that provides us with our North Star on each one of these 19 key performance indicators. From a staff standpoint, then, what our job is, is to develop strategies and monitor our KPI results and we would reflect that back to the board as part of our monthly workshops. I want to talk a little bit tonight about what I'm proposing as some changes to our workshop reporting that would be more aligned with this structure and, and get us to talking more about strategy- more about strategies and specific actions that are being taken throughout the years as we move forward. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. But again, just delineating the board responsibility and staff responsibility, and things that would show up on the strategic plan as we move forward. So again, the 10-year goals, the five-star ratings, and then the annual strategies for improvement. So again, these are things that would show up on the strategic plan. So we have these strategies, and we're continuing to refine what our language is around the strategies, but we want to make sure that this document can be something understandable to community members, connected to actions that improve our key performance indicators, with the strategies being kind of the umbrella, and then the action plans being the work that's being done underneath each one of those strategies. And that it's unique to each year, so in this case, unique to 2025. So we certainly don't want to roll over just generic, generic actions that we would do year in, year out, because we want to make sure we're, through our value of continuous improvement, making sure that we're continuing to drill down in what actions we need to take that are going to best leverage our progress towards improving our KPIs, with our goal of getting all of our KPIs to that five-star rating. So that's what we'll see on the strategic plan, would be the 10-year goals and the five-star rating, and then the strategies. What you won't see on the strategic plan, that'll be specifically articulated in the workshops that we have on a monthly basis, as you just heard, would be our staff monitoring of progress. So within our monitoring, we have three-year goals, again, that determine the reasonable progress that we would need to make in order to make that achievement of those five-star ratings. Our one-year goals, from where we are right now, and what we want to accomplish from a accountability standpoint on our measures throughout the next year, to make progress towards those five-star ratings. And then also looking at, not only our strategies for this next year, but also the 90-day action plan. So what is the work that we're actually doing? And our executive team and our principals are in 90-day cycles of improvement for their actions. So what I'm going to ask our staff, our executive staff, as part of our upcoming workshops to do, is to outline the, some of the 90-day action plans that they're taking, and to be able to update more specifically the work that's being done. I think that's something that we've been lacking as part of our reporting, we've been at a pretty high annual level, and I think this process will allow us to be able to just more clearly articulate some of our specific actions. And depending on when the workshops are throughout the year, it might be a reflection back on work that has been done, and in some cases, it might be a foreshadowing of what we're going to do. But to be able to provide the board and the community with more specific actions that are taking place, I think will be important moves. And then, of course, our assessments that are very important, some are quarterly, some are monthly, to make sure that we're actually seeing the progress that we need to make, and if we're not, what actions are corresponding with that. And some of our KPIs also have weekly scorecard indicators that we review at the executive team level. So some do, some do not. So that will be something that we can articulate as part of our upcoming workshops. So again, this is what I provided a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to be able to just refresh the board with that. I also wanted to just provide an overview, and this is, again, a template that we'll be building out as we look at our KPI workshop staff reports. So my goal is to be able to have the first iteration of this for our next workshop in March, which will be the college and work experience KPI that Ms. Kifmeyer will be providing. And the idea is to be able to do some restructuring of those staff reports, to be able to be really specific in drawing that line from the five-star rating, which is our long-term goal, and where that falls then within our three-year goals, our one-year goals, and where our current rating is. So, I think that's been something that's also been lacking, as we've been talking about, the use of our strategic plan should really be something that's grounded in our goal setting, to be able to provide that alignment for our goals. And then underneath that, then, thinking about our strategies. So the strategies on the strategic plan should be something that, again, are unique to 2025, that we can be communicating to the community, and that we believe are high-leverage moves to make sure we're making progress towards that one-year goal. So those strategies being articulated as part of the workshops, I think are important, and maybe as important or more important are going to be some of the action steps that we're taking a look at, and these are adult action steps. So these aren't things that we're asking kids to do, these are things that we're taking responsibility as a system to be able to improve, to help move us forward. So I want to make sure that we have some better articulation of our actions. What you'll likely see, then, what I anticipate you seeing, is us spending more time on the actions. We'll still have the data available and the results from all of these as we move forward, based on our monitoring of progress. You'll still see the annual results as an aggregate, you'll still see the subgroups, so that'll be part of, part of the conversation. But I anticipate us spending more time now with strategies and actions that the, again, the adults in our system, between our directors, our teachers, and other staff that would be involved, would be taking. So this is a way for us to be able to, our proposal for us to be able to restructure our workshop staff reports, to make them, again, more actionable, and how we're using the strategic plan throughout the year. So it's not just a document that sits on our website and that we update once a year, but it's something that is living and breathing, and that we have, we're constantly coming back to this on a monthly basis. We'd still do our overview once a year, but I really think that this is something that can be a value add for us. So I wanted to just be able to provide that for the board, for an outline, and that was an update from our previous conversations, and either take feedback on that, and like I said, if this looks acceptable, at least to be able to have a first iteration of this as we're moving forward in next month's meeting, and something we can refine as we go, again. But trying to be much more aligned, if you will, and linear with our description of our strategies and our actions, which I think has been something that we've included in reports, but haven't necessarily done it in the most structured way. So trying to make it easier for board members and for community members to follow. So that's what I wanted to be able to provide, just as a preface to tonight's conversation decision, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When we're getting into action steps, how do we keep the board out of the weeds of the action steps?
Yeah, so I think that's, so that's a good question, and that'll be important. So again, and that's going back to the previous slide, related to board responsibility and staff responsibility. Really, the board responsibility is to be able to, you know, determine those 19 KPIs and that long-term goal, and to be able to stay then updated on what our progress is. So, staff responsibility being determining what those strategies are and what those action plans are as we're moving forward. So, we really want to make sure that, again, we can provide adequate insight into some of the actions we're taking and some of the progress that we're making, but we're not, we're not going to bring these as a workshop, we're not bringing these like for approval of the actions or approval of the strategies, we're bringing this as like information as we're moving forward. And so that'll be important, you know, as we, as we go. But I think, you know, honestly, just out of the sense of transparency as we're moving forward, I think being able to have some of these actions can be, can be helpful for us as we go. And again, on the strategic plan document, it would be the strategies, which would be kind of the overall, the, you know, a little bit bigger picture. Internally, then, we, that's where we keep track of all of the action plans as we, as we have that. So, but we would just present that as, you know, here are the things that we're working on. And again, we're working in 90-day cycles, so that's the, the idea that we would outline, you know, here's what our quarterly goals basically are and our actions that we'd be taking, here's an update on where we're at, and going from there. But to your point, it'll be, it'll, will be important to understand like whose role is what, right? As we, as we move through that. But, but I'm hopeful that we can, we can do that as a team together, because I think that'll help provide, again, not only you, but, but also our community with an idea of exactly what's going on in this system.
You just have to be aware of that as board members.
Yeah.
I like how it all rolls together. Anyone else? Dr. Herzog?
I have another take on this, because I sit on the CISA 6 Board of Control, and we just met last night, and we look at KPIs, and when they achieve their five-star rating, they then ratchet up what the next steps are. I don't see that reflected here. For example, in the audit report, which is on page seven, that's already a five-star. The safety plan on page 12 is five-star, so we're already there. So, I'm wondering, okay, so what's, what are the next goals, then, if we've already achieved those goals, namely the five-star? And then I look at reading and math, and we're at a level two, I'm not interested in waiting 10 years to get to five stars. I think this should be a five-year plan, not a 10-year plan. And I think for clarification, if the strategies for improvement, if I heard you correctly, apply to 2025, that should be written in here, strategies for improvement in 2025, but I think 10 years is way too long to wait. I've already waited 10 years on this board for improvement in our reading scores, and that's way too long.
Yeah. So, if I can just provide a little bit of commentary for that. So first of all, so, some of our KPIs, as we would look at, like the audit, for example, it's really sustaining that five-star level that would be important, because it's zero to one finding on the KPI that determines a five-star rating. So we couldn't go, couldn't go beyond like zero findings, right? And so, I think we'd have to look at, for some of our, some of our key performance indicators, that would be maybe on a percentage basis, as we would approach that, as we get to five stars, I think we can reset those.
Okay.
But I think there's certain, there's certain KPIs that, that just wouldn't lend themselves necessarily to just rolling over to like another level, because they would be comprehensive in themselves. So I think we have to look at, at that per KPI as we, as we're moving forward. I agree with the fact that we shouldn't be waiting, we're not waiting for anything, you know, related to getting to five stars. If we could get to five stars tomorrow, everybody in this organization would, would like go ahead and do that. So, what we're saying is that we have a target that's out there for our, our five-star target, that that's our 10-year goal as we, as we would move forward, right? And that we have to have a North Star, to the point of, as you would be resetting, you know, some standards related to CISA and their KPIs, you know, the five-star is out there for us to stretch and do achieve to, once they get that, then they, you know, reset and create another one. So we would be in that same process as we would be moving forward with our, with our reading KPIs. And we, you know, certainly intend to, through our investment in literacy, to be able to continue to move the needle towards that five-star aspect. So I don't want it to sound like the 10-year goal is us not showing urgency, because it certainly is, and you'll be able to see that through the action steps that we have, and the fact that we've got, you know, realistically, we need to set one-year goals, three-year goals as we're moving forward. And again, we boil that down to 90-day action plan. So what are we doing right now to make sure that we move forward? But we also have to be realistic with what our current, you know, environment is, you know, what our current state is, if you will, and where we want to be able to get incrementally. So I think that's an important, it's important to take a really strategic and deliberate like steps as we move forward towards those five, five-star ratings, so we can stay the course, because those plans are going to be really important for us as we're moving forward, with whoever is in my seat or who's ever in any of our administrator's seats, it's the plans that you would look at and adopt, you know, it wouldn't be necessarily the person or their philosophies or their ideology. The idea is that we can, we can get a plan for our future in the system embedded, and then whoever is here to administer it would administer it. And we would just want to be able to have that plan and that target as we move forward. So, yeah, and as far as like, it's saying 2025 specifically for the strategies for improvement, we could put that on there. The entire document is for 2025, so the strategies, all the strategies that you would see on there would be strategies that we feel are high priorities for the 2025 calendar year. And then next year, as we would get to 2026, then we would also have, then, all of those strategies would be for this next year, as we move forward.
I'm, I'm still uncomfortable with 10 years. Just take a look at the mod rate. We have staff members who are being hurt by children, and I don't, I'm not willing to wait 10 years to get us to a five-star rating, and reduce that number to something under 1.0. I just think 10 years is too long for a number of these, and I'd like to see five-year, a five-year plan, not a 10-year plan. I do agree, this, this all fits nicely together. I also feel it would fit nicely with a five-year plan, not a 10-year plan.
We can take a look at that. I mean, again, like, I believe the CISA model uses that 10-year plan also, right? Is my understanding?
I'm not sure if it's a 10-year plan or not, but we see, we see them getting to five-stars on a regular basis, and then they recalibrate, maybe they choose a, a different topic or goal under that particular item, but we're seeing a lot of change and improvement and growth, and it's, it's not taking them 10 years to do that.
Yeah. Well, and I'll just say, Ted Nitske from CISA 6 facilitated this process.
I understand.
Gave us the 10-year plan as the model.
Okay.
In that we would set up, we would set up 90-day cycles of improvement for our actions, we would set one-year goals to be able to, you know, achieve with urgency, that would have us progress towards our 10-year plans, and we would set three-year goals to stretch us a little bit more, and that 10-year mark then is a point in time. So in 2023, we set that 10-year mark, that's down to eight years right now, right? Because as you get a little bit, as you get closer to that mark, and so philosophically, that's the way that Ted had set it up for us as we were looking forward. The idea is that you can get some vision, but we're, we're also working with great urgency. If we can get there in five years, awesome. Like, we would love to do that, and we would love to then go back to your point and just reset our literacy strategy, or our literacy goals for a new five-star rating in five years, that would be fantastic. So I don't think there's anything in the structure that prevents that, and there's, for me, there's no disincentive for having like a long-term goal, because we have one and three-year goals as we're moving forward. And again, for us, it would be 2033, it wouldn't necessarily always be a 10-year goal, that goal will come closer and closer and closer as we're moving forward. So, like, that's the structure. And, you know, in that, in that structure, again, in three years, like, it will be a five-year goal, because it's, we're looking at 2023 as our destin, or 2033 as our destination time, and, and we're rolling it forward as we go. So right now, we're in a one, three-year, and basically eight years, because we're a couple of years into this process as we move forward.
So that I hear you're saying we're not changing the goals at all until 2033?
So, for, annually, we'll change the goals for the one-year goals, and the three-year goals will change annually.
But not the 10-year goals?
But the 2033 goal. So maybe thinking about it more as the goal for 2033, and not necessarily a 10-year goal. It's, we started this process with Ted Nitske, and he had recommended, set it out 10 years so you have a target. And so that was really 2023, but that is basically like a stake in the ground, if you will, and we're progressing towards that. So, every year, we'll have a one-year, a new one-year goal, a new three-year goal, which will show progress towards 2033, and we're constantly then doing our 90-day cycle action, action steps, if you will, to be able to make progress towards that. That's what our process is.
So then, are you saying that there will be more communication with the board as to what the one-year strategies and the three-year strategies will be to reach the 2023 goals?
Yeah.
The 2033 goals?
Yeah. So within the workshops, and they'd be one-years, basically one-year strategies. So within the workshops, what I'm proposing through this proposal, is that we would, we would be sharing more information related to the strategies that we're doing for the next year, and then underneath that, the action steps that are being taken in that current year, depending on when the report comes out, and what those action steps are producing throughout that year. So that would be more of the detail that we would get as we'd be moving forward, compared to previous reports. And that, again, to me, is important, important process as we're moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Comment, Dr. Herzog?
I think I, I have a similar concern to, as Dr. Herzog, but I'm, again, going to express it a slightly different way. You know, again, I appreciate what you're laying out here for a new structure for reporting on a monthly basis. I think where I struggle is, I went back and looked again at the 2024 strategic plan, and kind of looked at all the strategies and stuff, and said, at face value, I understood what you were going to do, they seemed reasonable, and I agree that in this new strategic plan, you've changed things, these are unique strategies that you're proposing. But again, where I'm struggling with is, even if we come out with 90-day things that we anticipate that we're going to do, I agree that it's not the board's role of picking those things, that we rely upon you and the experts in this room to select those things, and I'm going to defer to that. With the one caveat of, I have an expectation of those things that you're going to choose to do, they need to be effective.
Right.
And so, that's where I'm left with, you know, when I, I said last month, or two weeks ago, you know, to Mr. Wright's point, you know, I'm not cherry picking data, we've picked the, the KPIs. We've picked the, the KPIs and last year, we had a set of KPIs. And this year, we've got a new set and you had two of them go up. And I'm happy for that. And we had three of them go down. And I'm not excited by that. And the rest of them stayed the same. And so objectively looking at, did we make progress? Well, it seems like we went down a little bit. So that's my struggle is somehow, some way, what we're choosing to do, we have to just look to you and you're gonna pick the things. I'm not gonna tell you what to pick, but it needs to be effective. And we've got to make that happen. And so far, I, I haven't necessarily seen in this plan anything that is substantially different from last year. So I'm gonna say no to this, but I'm excited about what you've proposed here. I think maybe we're gonna get more information and I'll feel better about it. But so that, that's where I'm at with it right now.
So what, what would that, what would that look like?
Well, that's, the struggle is you all are the experts in the room and I just have to look to you to say, pick it and-
Well, and what I'm saying, yeah, in, in this, in this plan and in the proposal for the, for the workshops is that we would be articulating the effective strategies that we're looking at. We would be looking at, you know, and be more open related to the progress that's being made and not being made. And as you know, the complexity of our systems over 19 KPIs, majority of things will work and we'll plan on all of them being effective. And some things don't work and we'll have to fail fast and then move off of those and be able to have an explanation of, of how we're moving forward. So I mean, that's, that's the, again, in our value of continuous improvement, like that's realistically how organizations are able to move forward. And so I think this plan would provide the board with, you know, more of an, an idea of those actions. Again, to the point of not, the board not getting in the weeds. But part of our responsibility as staff to be able to choose the highest, most effective strategies that we believe are gonna move our key performance indicators forward, that's our, our responsibility, right, as the system. I just want to be able to lay that out as part of our staff reports, have our staff be able to talk about, to your point, the effectiveness of these strategies and how are we gonna know that, right? How are we measuring that effectiveness as we move forward? So as a system, we can communicate that. And not only to the board is that important. As important is we can turn it back around to the staff who are doing the work, whether it's our directors or our coaches or our teachers or paraprofessionals, custodial staff, that they understand like where their work is contributing to these larger goals, right? And so that's where we're gonna be coming also out this spring with our strategic plans from a building level that'll look at reading, social-emotional learning and staff engagement as their key performance indicators that they would have at the building level because each building is a little bit unique on their strategies also. So they'll be providing some similar processes that we're, that we're offering here. And I think as we would hear our principal reports, as we would move into next fall, during our principal reports, it would be an opportunity for them to talk about what effective strategies are they using at a building level to be able to move their scores forward, knowing that that's alignment with what the system is expecting. So we would report it out at the workshops at a district level, but you'd also have an opportunity to see and talk to some principals who are doing that specifically at a building level. And it's that type of continuity within the system that I think gives strength to this strategic plan and what our process is and both having long-term goals and short-term cycles of improvement from a, in 90-day action plans, if you will, to be, be able to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing, we're responding. We know whether we're making progress or not. And if we're not, we're getting off it. And if we are, we're gonna continue to improve it as we move forward.
I think one example happened this evening and that was the staff retention report. It's very possible, we have two stars, but it's very possible that we're not measuring the correct information. I mean, we may be very acceptable in that area based on surrounding areas. And so I think we also have to look at, not that we should go down or lower our standards, but we have to be reasonable what it is that we're trying to measure. And it's, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And again, you know, this, this gives our staff the ability to have some targets and to be able to have a reporting mechanism. That's really the value of what the strategic plan is. And, and again, we structure our workshops based off of that most important work.
And when will we start to see the new workshop format?
So the initial iteration I'll have to you with Ms. Kiffmeyer next month. And really, that's to provide just a first iteration of it, to be able to provide some feedback. If there's things that we want to, you know, tweak on that, then great. Like we're wide open to what, what that feedback would be. Again, not necessarily like do this or do that with specific actions, but like the format of what you're seeing, I think can be, can be something that we can, we can work through. And again, we don't want it to be so onerous that, you know, staff is spending a lot of time just doing reports and not doing the actual work that needs to be done. But there, there's an opportunity for us, I think, to be able to, through some processes that we're now doing at an executive team level, to be able to easily start to translate that, those into some of our staff reports as we move forward.
Maybe we could use a plus delta wondering sheet after Mrs. Kiffmeyer's report in case the board has some ways to express themselves about the format and how it was presented, not necessarily about the topic matter, but if it was an effective change for us.
Yeah, that sounds good.
At some, we have to see results and staying on a, I'll just pick on the mod rate because we have staff who are being injured. And we've been at that three-star level, I think now, for two or three years. We've gotta see a change in that. And it's, to me, it's more than, okay, what are the actions we're taking to change that? But if we stay in that third, that three-star level, we're not, we're not showing the results that we should be. And there has to be better accountability in all areas. I'm confident that what Sam has outlined for us in reading and math will come to fruition. And so we, we hear all the time about I-ready is up, the indicators are up, but we're not seeing that reflected in the stars. And we need to see that, that reflected in those stars. So I'm not happy with the 10-years. I will vote for this. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, but I want to see movement on those stars, which will show us progress to the 10-year. But to do the 10-year, you gotta do the one-year, the three-year and the five-year. I get that. But we need to start seeing some improvements. That's what people are telling you when you go out on the campaign trail. I can tell you that from 2023. And Mrs. Dewett is agreeing with me on that. People want to see results. They want to see improvements. And when we were looking at that, excuse me, is those star ratings?
I think that is my biggest struggle with this as well is the, the 10-year and actually seeing results. It, you know, looking at it looks pretty similar to what we saw last year. I, I don't necessarily care how we get there, but I want to see the results. So I, I'm struggling as well with that, with 10-year. I, I don't know and I'm, you know, why we couldn't move it to a five? Is it just because Ted had recommended this? I guess I, there's still some gray area and question that I have. I mean, we don't have 10-years. We have kids that can't, are leaving our district and are not able to, you know, survive in society essentially, don't know how to read and write. I don't think we have any more time to-
Gosh, gosh. So just, again, there's-
Maybe I'm not understanding it properly.
So 10, 10 years is a point in time in 2033, just to be able to have a long-term goal. So it's, it's good practice for organizations to be able to have a vision beyond where we are right now and where we want to land. And, and this model looks at that vision as, as landing it at a five-star level, right? So that's, that's the perspective of it. With urgency, we create action plans and have measures within 90-day cycles. So every quarter, we'll, or every year, we lay out what are the strategies that we want to accomplish over the next year to make sure that we're improving progress within our key, key performance indicators. Sometimes, similar to our students' growth in literacy, sometimes you can make progress within a star rating and not bump up to the next star, right? Like you can, you can make progress within a two-star rating or a three-star rating and not bump up to the next star, depending on where you start, right? And so we want to just continue to be able to monitor this like as we, as we move forward. But with urgency, we have people doing work in 90-day action plans to be able to achieve those one-year strategies, right? And the, the one-year goals, which makes progress towards the three-year goals, which makes progress towards the long-range goals. So I just want to make sure we're not getting hung up on like 10 years being too long that like, again, if we can make it realistically in the next six months, love to declare that, right? I don't think that's realistic, right, from where we are in some of our KPIs as we're moving forward. Not that I don't hope and deeply believe in all of our staff, because I do. I wouldn't be here and I wouldn't be laying this out for you if I didn't, with full conviction, believe that we can get there. And with urgency, we do need to make some progress. And the workshops that'll be in front of you then, you'll be able to see what the strategies are, what the action steps are, and then what, what we're monitoring in a short term, in a 90-day cycle, what we're monitoring in the short term to say, we believe that we can accomplish this goal after a year, this goal after three years, based on the early indications of what we're seeing. In some cases, we're gonna say, we don't believe we can get that. We've gotta change strategies and now we know. I would say historically, within school districts, and not necessarily just specific to OASGOSH, but in school districts and in bureaucracies in general, is the early indication signs in those strategies that aren't built into the system enough to react quickly and you stay on poor practices longer than you should. So what we're building in this system is an early response system based on these 90-day action plans that then hit these one-year goals, three-year goals, and then our long-range plans, so we'll say 2020, or 2033 for us, to make sure that we have some like vision of where we're headed. Because if we don't have that, we're kind of just, you know, rudderless. We're not really sure where we're headed. So again, I just want to reemphasize, just asking, don't get hung up on the, on the 10-years or eight-years type of thing. It's really the long-term goals. This model puts it at 2033. That's what was recommended to us. Word with urgency, we live like where our feet are, which are every day in our 90-day action plans. Like that's what we're using. That's where our work is. When we come to these types of sessions, then we talk about, okay, where are we compared to, you know, our long-range plans or our three-year goals? But we're really looking at what we're, our work that we're doing in these 90-day cycles. Like that's really what our work is. And our team has done a good job of that in being able to change strategies based on what we're seeing in some of those early indications. Our staff engagement results that you saw tonight are a really good example of that, right? Being able to have some, some data that we've been collecting longitudinally. Our principals and our directors have been able to take that data back to our teams to be able to improve practices and we've seen results on the, the assessment. So we'll continue to do that, like in our staff engagement numbers, for example. We'll continue to do that. Will it always go up every time? Maybe, maybe not. But we're gonna make sure that we're doing everything that we can based on the information that we have to make sure that we can improve, in that case, staff engagement in our environment. So not gonna be a perfect process, but I think anybody, anybody, or any staff that you have in here that's gonna be working, it's, if they're telling you it's gonna be perfect and just a, a straight line up, like they're not being honest, right? And so like this is difficult, complex work. And we're committed to our value of continuous improvement. And that's what this cycle, or that's what this process puts in place for us.
I also see, see this as improved communication with the board and the community.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's, that's the idea, you know, as we're putting this together.
Okay. Any further comments? Call the roll, please.
We got, we need a motion, don't we? Do we have a motion?
We had a motion.
Carolyn and Dewett.
Yep. We're in a discussion.
That was a long time ago.
Yep. And it was.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Dewett.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
No.
Smutley.
Aye.
Ray.
Yeah. Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We approve the strategic plan. Request for future agenda items.
Me.
I.
You go first.
I actually have one. I've been thinking about this for quite a while. I would like for us to look at our legal services, just like we have looked at our financial services and our realtor services. I want to make sure that we are getting the best service for our dollar. So I'd like that to go through that process.
Thank you.
So, that's so funny because I was going to suggest something similar. The date I have on this email I sent myself is July. And I, I think it was earlier than July. But policy number 0172 gives the board the right to select legal counsel and retain legal counsel. I had said that I wanted to look, and I take responsibility for this because I am policy chair, but I had said that I want to look at policy 0172 and put some parameters around it regarding specifically looking at, or this might be for facilities and finance, provide an estimate for legal fees annually, if it's easy. Answer the question, has the OASD ever evaluated the performance of legal counsel, yes or no? I can't recall a time in my nine years on the board that we evaluated our legal counsel, so I'm thinking the answer is no. And then when was the last time the district sent an RFP for legal services? I reached out to WOSB for guidance on this as well. And they sent me something that said, most public schools in the state of Wisconsin have an established relationship with one or more attorneys in one or more law firms. And there is no law governing the method by which a school district selects or retains legal counsel. It's often governed by policy. And we know that policy is our power. So my follow-up is to update the 0172 policy. And I guess Christopher and I were on the same wavelength with that, so.
Yeah.
Anything else for future agenda items? Dr. Herzog.
I would like us to have a, an update on the criteria for employee of the year awards and also for the individual friend of education and corporate friend of education awards. I'm not sure that that's a open process. I don't know what the process is, but I'd like to know what the criteria are and what the process is for choosing those since the board doesn't have any input in those currently.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just gonna reiterate my call for hopefully in a future agenda item for use of discipline and role of SROs and appropriate division of actions between SROs and what it would be appropriate for school staff as well.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Announcements?
Barb.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, so moved. Second. I don't know.
Do the motion.
I know. Second.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Carolyn.
Aye.
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 Aye. Oh, big gravy.
Oh, sorry, I missed it.